All right.
Yep.
Welcome to Savannah County Board of Supervisors meeting, new fifth, two thousand twenty-four. We are glad to be home back in our courthouse. I think it's fitting for uh what we do and we're back at our county seat. So, welcome. Um, we're gonna start with the call to order. And then the pledge of allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I got some of the agenda.
But any changes?
Um, there's just one thing, but we can get to it. I mean, there's, there's a discussion, Mr. Fairchild had about colonial circle apartment questions, but I think with, with being short on time, I can just email the board and, and, and we can get some of that out of the way. Yep. So, no, not, no changes.
So second.
Tony made the motion. I seconded.
Okay. So, uh, motion by Mr. Sheridan, second by Mr. O'Brien on favor.
Hi.
Anybody opposed? There are votes high five zero. And administrators report?
Yep, sure. Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'll try and be quick to catch up on some time and sorry, uh, sorry for the technical difficulties, everyone.
Can I just add to everybody that, oh, but we're on with YouTube, right?
We are, we are, we are. Um, so someone's got a birthday coming. Um, yes, someone's got a birthday coming up here soon. Happy early birthday. Uh, we have a couple of new employees started. Williams, uh, William Brooks started as an E M T B L S, uh, in the Department of Emergency Services, started May twenty-eighth. S also Dustin Burrow, uh, started in the Emergency Services Department, uh, E M T B L S, and he also started on May twenty-eighth as well. Certainly welcome them and happy to have them aboard. Um, the Virginia Tourism Corporation announces grant funding for Fluvana County Tourism. So the county received a thirteen thousand dollar, um, V T C Marketing Leverage Grant. Uh, in partnership with the Arts of Fluvana, these funds will be used to build on the success of the Fine Fluvana Campaign and create a launch uh, and launch a Fall in Love with Fluvana Initiative. And additionally, the Fluvana County Fair Board also received nine thousand dollar in grant funds for special events and, and the festivals category specifically for kind of the county fair and what they do. So happy to have those, uh, those additional funds to move some initiatives forward. Um, also through the Virginia Tourism Corporation, Fluvana County has officially been designated as a destination marketing organization. So at its March twentieth meeting, the board approved a resolution, uh, making that designation. Um, and so then last week, V C T approved the request. This recognition allows the county to access state resources, funding, and collaborative marketing initiatives aimed at boosting tourism and economic development in the county. Um, Palm, Palmira Arts Fest is going to be held this Saturday, um, June eighth, um, and the rain date, rain date is June ninth. Um, the Arts Fest will be from ten A M. To four P M. It'll be in the Village of Palmira on Stone Jail Street. Uh, again, there'll be local artists and artisans, performers, food trucks, and children's activities. So certainly welcome everyone to come out for that, for that event and, uh, support, uh, support your local, uh, local Fluvana businesses. Um, the library kicked off summer with the mini menagerie petting zoo with over four hundred people attending uh, the, the, the pet mini farm, attending to pet mini farm animals, play games and do farm-themed crafts. Um, and they also started a weekly summer feeding program, which was, um, provided, uh, the food was provided through the Blue Ridge Food Pantry, which provides non-perishable meals every Friday to residents under the age of eighteen. This program provides five breakfasts and five suppers in each box. Um, the library gave out a hundred and twelve boxes, which is their max every week for June. And upcoming meetings, um, so our next meeting, June twentieth, we have a six P M. Regular meeting here in the Circuit Courtroom. And then after that, Wednesday, July third, and just remember, uh, Thursday, instead of June nineteenth, would normally be our, our regular meeting, but it's June twentieth, Thursday, June twentieth is our, our meeting change due to June nineteenth being Juneteenth, which is a, uh, state holiday that, that county follows. Um, Wednesday, July third, we'll have a double meeting, a five P M. And a six P M. Meeting, which, um, that's the only meeting for the month of July. And then, uh, our next meeting after that would be Wednesday, August seventh at five P M. Happy to be, uh, answer, answer any questions for the board.
Question? All right, no questions. We'll, um, open our first round of public comments. Anybody wishing to address the board should come to the podium, say your name and address. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes on topic and direct to the board. And just to let everybody know, if you're running, if you're here to be on a, a committee or a board or something, that will be during that stage. So this is just general comments. Anyone wishing to address the board? All right, seeing none, uh, we'll close the first round of public comments and we'll go to appointments.
Yep. Uh, so, Mr. Chair, on the screen ahead of you there, we've got multiple appointments that we're getting ready to get set up for, for basically July first with, uh, with the one exception to that is for the, uh, MACA representative, which is a term beginning basically at today's meeting. So you can see the, the, the list of, of candidates for the different appointments. Um, for economic development at large position, you've got multiple candidates for job board. You have one candidate. Um, for the Library Board of Trustees, you have one candidate who is the incumbent. Um, for, uh, MACA, um, you have two candidates, um, available for that. And then for the Planning Commission, um, you have uh, two appointments and two, two incumbents that want to be, that are seeking reappointment. And then again, you have some additional as well. The one change, uh, Suzie Morris has, um, pulled her name out of the hat for the Cunningham District Planning Commission. So happy to start with which, how are the board wants?
I'd say let's start at the top.
Yeah.
You know, good. Start with E D A and start with the appointees from the top working down, Mr. Stoffer. Just, and by the way, you don't have to come up, but if you would like to make a presentation of who you are, you're certainly welcome. Mr. Reese Peck.
Gentlemen.
Hey there.
Uh, Reese Pack, Five Spoon Terrace, Palmira. I'm a retired public administrator. I also worked in, uh, finance. I was a practicing C F P. I've forty years of experience. Uh, in my career, I, uh, set up, uh, the Economic Development Program for the Catskill uh, area. It's a rural area. I set up a sixty million dollar Catskill Fund for the Future. I've also, uh, worked as county administrator and town manager where I've worked closely with the E D As to, uh, do various studies, put together and implement some plans for them. Uh, I also, um, worked for the state and ran their Economic Development Program, Department of Housing and Community Development, uh, the state enterprise, so. It's, I know the state agencies, I know the playing field. Uh, and I know it's, uh, how important economic development is uh, into a community and also how to, I guess, uh, it's a balancing you need to make in a world. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Erica Rice. Uh, Charlotte Gregory. And James Jones.
Good evening, board. I just wanted to let you know that until today, I did not know how many candidates you had for each position. And, uh, I have come up before you many times to offer, uh, my service on whatever boards or commissions you feel could best help the county. Uh, and it seems right now the, uh, the jump board sticks out in front, uh, of, of the others being the candidate to apply. Hate to see any positions left unfilled. Uh, however, I do think economic development is incredibly important for Fluvana County. We have a large amount of our tax burden on the residents and we would do well to improve, increase the amount of commercial tax revenue that we generate here in Fluvana County. So this is a very important board, and if you believe that I would be the best one to serve on that board, I would love to be on that board. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So do we want to deal with each one with a vote at a time? I think we should. Yeah. So we're not thinking back.
It, it might be easier this way. You can get it consolidated. Yeah.
All right, any discussion?
Well, um, I've been to several of the ribbon cuttings and I'm quite familiar with, um, Ms. Gregory. She's in Women in Business. She's active in the community. She's got the passion for it, and I think she'd be a good candidate, uh, on the E D A. So, it's just my take.
I think, uh, James Johnson has, uh, come up many, many times and offered. Uh, yeah, he's certainly been involved before starting running the C as well, too. Uh, again, I like the fact that, uh, maybe raise some perspective. Being a little bit younger than some of the people that might be out there. And, uh, you know, certainly everybody's very qualified. So that's just my, my read on that. I don't have the pleasure of knowing Mr. Peck and uh, or Miss Rice or Miss Gregory.
No else?
Um, I, I would, I would say I, I knew James and Charlotte and I've recently been acquainted with Mr. Peck and I think Mr. Mr. Peck has a, uh, you know, a background that could bring a lot to the table. Um, and, um, I also agree with Tim. I, I've known Charlotte probably longer, um, or gotten to know her, um, over the course of going to a lot of these ribbon cuttings, um, and, uh, have known her from seeing her in the community over the years at, at various events. And she's very, very passionately involved, um, with the women in business and, and has been for a while. Um, and so, um, and, and, and as a business owner herself, if I'm not mistaken, um, um, and, um, I think she'd be, I think we've got a, as Mr. Sheridan always says, we've always got a lot of great options in there, but, um, I could certainly get behind Ms. Gregory as well.
You know, good.
Okay.
He said it. He said my line.
Okay.
I did.
If there's no discussion, I'd like to nominate Charlotte Gregory for the Economic Development Authority at Large Position.
I'll second.
A motion, uh, Mr. Hod, second by Mr. Goode on favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Did, uh, what do we have for? Do we have four? Okay. Okay, nobody against chair votes, uh, passes five zero.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to, we change Johnson to the John Board.
Second, second.
No discussion.
I'm gonna add the second one, too.
Okay.
Carol Potters to the Library Board of Trustees.
Second that.
Motion by Mr. Sheridan, the Tim second?
He said, he said it after I finished it.
Okay, second by Mr. Hodge, all in favor?
Hi.
Anybody against? Chair votes high five zero. Monticello Area Community Action Agency, MACA. Uh, Mr. Barker.
Mr. Barker reached out.
Can't make it.
Oh, that's right.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, uh, he's very actively involved.
Yes.
I, 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 I think.
When you get Mr. Stuster, at least it's chances to speak for Chris.
Okay.
I agree with Chris. He's really, really involved with that, and I think he'd be a superb candidate to fill that position.
Hey, I nominate, uh, Monticello Area Community Action Agency, Chris Barker.
Second. Motion made by Tony O'Brien, second by Mr. Hodge on favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Nobody against chair votes, uh, five zero.
And just, just to note for the record that that term begins basically today, Ju- June fifth.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I think my last thing.
Um, is that, have you all traditionally done that?
If you, if you want to.
I don't feel may need to make the motion, but I
say any my.
I'm happy to vote for it. I don't, I don't feel like it's gonna change anything whether to do or not.
So just passing it on to you, so that's.
Was there any conversation about Cunningham District Plan? Does anybody want? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, Suzie's gone. Mr. Josh Bauer. Mr. Peck.
In my career, I've, um, been chairman of the Planning Commission. I was the chairman of the James City County Planning Commission. Uh, very high-growth county, uh, dealt with a lot of the issues of balancing growth. Uh, also set up, uh, when I was chairman, uh, the annual scorecard to keep track of where we were implementing the, uh, the comprehensive plan, both, both the, the parties of the, the county government, but also the private sector that were part of implementing. I've also been a zoning administrator, uh, in my career, uh, for several towns. Um, and also for eight years, uh, I was Deputy Secretary of Environmental Agency and also ran the state's, uh, D C R, uh, Non-Pollution Program. So quite familiar with, with, uh, environmental issues surrounding, uh, development issues. And again, um, I'm fairly new here. I understand that. Uh, I've got extensive background and, and, uh, I just hope to resource some time for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any conversation?
Yes.
I have to hear to that. Yes. Oh, there he is. Oh, he is. Sorry, I didn't see. All that world traveling he's been doing.
Well, most of y'all know me. I've been on the Planning Commission for sixteen years, just started my seventeenth year. I've been, uh, vice chairman and chairman most of that time, and I've been involved in covering plan quite a few times and I've missed three meetings in all those times. That's a little bit about me. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, any conversation?
Um, I will say, I think there's certainly, um, somewhere, it's kind of, kind of like we talked about with Mr. Schenzer, you know, with right time, right place. I, I think there's certainly a place, um, you know, with Mr., Mr. Peck's background to have an opportunity for him to serve somewhere, I would have a hard time. You know, Mr. Bibbs, you know, been doing this for sixteen years. He's been the chairman. Um, I, I would see, I would see no reason why we wouldn't renominate him to be chairman.
Mr. Bauer.
Or not chairman, but, but to that, to that position. I don't, I think. I think, did someone say something about Mr. Bauer?
I just.
He's not here.
Yes, someone called him out. He didn't come out. Yeah, um, I move the Board of Supervisors approve um, the following board commissioner committee appointments, uh, Barry Bibb to the Planning Commission from the Cunningham District.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Goode, second by Mr. Hodge on favor.
Hi.
None against, or votes high five zero. Congratulations. Uh, Palmira District Planning Commission, Mr. Lager Musina.
Any members of the board, uh, one thing I recognize about the Planning Commission is that you, as the board, rely on the Planning Commission to help, uh, understand the difficult, uh, situations that arise with land use management and land use management is very important for economic development and a whole slew of things. Uh, my background, I'm the Fire Marshal for Albemarle County, uh, and in that role, I'm responsible for being the voice of the Fire Department in land use management issues. I review plans, uh, and development processes for Albemarle County. Uh, I also have a master certificate, a graduate certificate in local government management. Uh, I'm two classes away from my master's degree in public administration and, uh, I also am a certified, uh, planning commissioner through, uh, through the V C U program. And I, I would love an opportunity to continue serving. Uh, I've been serving since I took over for Tricia Eggers' term and, uh, would love an opportunity to continue.
Thank you. Uh, Robert Stoffer's not here. Mr. Stuster?
If it's permissible, could I ask, is there any conflict of interest for being on the John Board and the Planning Commission?
No, there's not.
No, but thank you. Then I would love to be considered for this position in the Palmira District as a frequent member of, um, the Planning Commission meetings and Board of Supervisors meetings and, uh, frequent visitor to the Lake, uh, Lake Monticello's Community Development Committee meetings. I've become intimately familiar with the happenings at the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors and the incredibly important role to play here in the county. And I think it would be important to have dedicated citizens on that board with a diversity of perspectives. So I know there are a lot of good applicants you have on, uh, on deck today, so just wanted to say that I am willing to serve on the Planning Commission and would love to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion?
I'll start. Um, I've known both James and Howard, and I've worked closely with Howard, um, over the last two or three years, and I um, I think he's done really good work on the Planning Commission. Um, I think he brings that perspective, like you said, from the fire rescue. You know, he's, he's in the rescue squad here. He's involved in the community. And I think, um, having that stability on the Planning Commission now as we go through questions like solar and getting our comprehensive plan out there, I would really like to see us, uh, keep Howard in that position for the next four years.
Is that a motion?
For district.
I would like to move that we dominate Howard Lager Marsino as the incumbent to the Planning Commission for the Palmira District.
Well, second.
Motion made by Mr. Hodge, second by Mr. Goode on favor.
Hi.
Chair votes high five zero. All right, moving on to presentations. V dot Quarterler Report, Mr. Scott Corn.
Chairman, what? So for V I S, uh, for the last quarter, so we've been working continuously on maintenance and roadside. Um, as you may, may have noticed, primary and secondary mill started this month. Uh, primary one should be completed, uh, by the end of next week with secondary mill in June. Uh, we've also started our on-call pipe replacements, so those shallow pipe replacements are ongoing now. Um, and that is in advance of scheduled resurfacing work. That notice received was issued back in March with a fixed completion date of November first. So as they start going into Fluvana County, I will be sending, uh, two week looking kits to stay up for updates. Uh, we've also got ditching efforts underway currently, D M I, which they were here about this time last year. Um, we've been moving them around the residency area. Currently, they're in Louisiana County, but when they finish up their routes in Louisiana, they will be returning to Fluvana. So that's the ditching truck that, uh, self-loads. So you, uh, may see that coming through. Uh, one thing that is not happening in, um, Fluvana County, but will probably affect road users um, going up through fifteen in design crossroads. Um, we have a, uh, turnkey maintenance project that will be starting at the, um, D D I and going into Bordenville through fifteen. So, uh, that'll be starting in probably late summer, early fall, and it's expected to take two years. The purpose of that project is to bundle all of our maintenance tasks, resurfacing tasks, ditching, pipes, roadside tree trimming and, and have one contractor do it. Um, and then develop a program where, uh, we're doing forecast maintenance based on resurfacing needs. Um, and so that is the first project of its type, but starting in the fall and for about two years, there will be a lot of construction going on throughout that. And then, um, I'm talking with uh, Mr. Dahl, there are a few updates to some traffic studies that I have. Wait. So for Turkey Sag, and I have these studies that I'll give you.
Okay.
So for Turkey Sag, um, we are working on relocating the forty-five mile an hour sign, um, coming, um,
Me Martin's King.
Martin's King, sorry.
Okay, yeah.
Coming through Martin's King, um, one fifty-three, we're, we're working to move those stop signs.
And this, and Mr. Hodge, I think this kind of went back to your thing. I talked to Mr. Thornton about moving the sign from on the other side of Martin's King, kind of down the hill. So as you're coming into Fluvana, it's forty-five before you get to Martin's King instead of forty-five after you pass Martin's King.
Well, on that, I did have, I hate, hate to hold you up, but I went through there again because I didn't know if we were going to take any action. And as I was heading east or west towards Albemarle, I decided to make the turnaround in the driveway to the left just before you crest the hill. And when I turned, got my car turned around and pulled back out, I realized I only had twenty feet of visibility looking back towards Albemarle and the speed limit was fifty-five there. So those people, I literally had to turn the car off, roll the window down and listen to hear what I could hear coming. And then when I made nothing, turn the car on and go as quick as I could. I have no idea how that driveway got V dot connection approval with twenty feet of sight line in a fifty-five mile an hour zone. So if we're gonna move that sign, there's a church over the crest that hill, that would be the better place to slow the cars down.
Does your district go into Albemarle?
No, sir.
That's a problem.
So he can only take it to.
See, and that's, that's what I mentioned to him. Somewhere between the S curves, that should almost be forty-five to the S curves. And once you get down the S curves, then, then fifty-five is, but.
So they're gonna move it all to the west.
Yep.
Um, so the, uh, intent is for the adva- advanced warning sign to be at the bottom of the hill and then as you get to the top and crest it, where the forty-five zone starts.
So still, I mean.
He's talking about at the top of the next.
He's talking before you get to the bottom.
Yeah. I know what he's talking about. He was talking about moving it to the top of that next hill, which is in Albemarle.
Which is in Albemarle. That's, that's out of my.
Okay. But that's, we're gonna have an accident there at some point, and I didn't realize it until I made the choice, instead of going to the church and turning around. I was like, these people. And then I.
And also makes it over all Martin King. So I think they go over a little part.
And this is a private driveway.
It's a private driveway.
So back home, we are allowed, we must allow a connection to the state road. And if there is not adequate site distance, it has to be located in the best possible area for private connections.
Okay.
So e- even if it's not the most ideal section, if, if they, they are allowed that connection that we have.
Good to know.
Close to know.
Um, so the thirty-five mile an hour speed limit signs on Route Six. So we had to do some digging on this one, um, pretty, pretty interesting. So in nineteen eighty-two, there was a study done that placed those signs there. So in order to.
When you say, sorry, when you say Route Six, are we talking about old fire station and?
The old fire.
Yeah. And fourteen. Yep.
So those signs were in place, um, due to a study that was, uh, commissioned forty-two years ago. So, um, I have taught traffic engineering there. We're gonna re-study that to remove the, the sign. I can't simply just pull them out without a study saying to remove them. So.
And they're twenty-five mile an hour signs.
Twenty-five or thirty-five?
They're twenty-five.
There's, there's, you, there's a twenty-five section in between a thirty-five and a forty-five, isn't it?
I.
Thirty-five on fifteen. Then when you take the right at the church, it becomes twenty-five to the bottom. Then it goes to forty-five.
Yeah, there's no thirty-five at all.
So there's studying the whole section.
Okay.
So the speed will be set appropriately.
Okay.
On that, those signs will put there because of that, that study.
Okay.
Um, so then there was a question on the Route Fifty-three Colonial Gas Pipeline work. So the M X T for that has been approved, but no request for a speed reduction was ever received by V dot my office or the district.
Yeah, so you know, the Colonial Gas Pipeline, you see a lot of work happening. I mean, so, so they had some workers out there doing some slowdowns, and so the contractor ended up contacting me to see what they could do to get a, a temporary construction zone reduction in that area because the work's supposed to go on for three months.
Yes, sir.
And so I said, well, you need to, you need to reach out to V dot and V dot would be the, be the agency that could assist you with that. And so I don't know where that stands. Maybe they're doing something on their side to, to submit what they need, but I don't know.
Yes, they submitted, um, several items and they talked with our district traffic engineer, but the request included with the M O T was not for a speed reduction.
Really? Okay.
Um, yes, sir. So, and then as of this writing, um, there's still some remaining fees and sureties, so a permit has not been issued for that work. Um.
Can I ask?
Yes.
So and I go through there quite a bit. And certainly it seems adequate. And certainly it seems adequate to me where the sign guy is on each side. Like, is there a criteria that they would go by or just if they request it, they'd likely get it, you know?
So it would be evaluated and then we would talk with the sheriff's office to see if it's it's likely. So back home, if you're in a works name, there's all already the slowing down, move over. Um, so if it's forty-five, it's it's already set to thirty-five once you're in that works out. The intent is to slow traffic and and move over there.
Okay.
Um, so what we're talking about for a temporary reduction will be something that's in place. And it's really intended to where if it works and it was in place like a lane um lane reduction or something that was going to be placed overnight, not necessarily when they're working, when there are people there. So um you know, you you probably see them on on the interstate where if they're working at night, but then during the daytime, they've got the parrot balls up and they want you to slow down fifty-five or something through there.
Okay.
That's usually when you see that. So it's in that and it connected the entire time.
Thank you.
Um. The question regarding Dobby Creek Road six sixty-two, uh question on why how speed was lowered from five to fifty-five. Yes, there was a study conducted back in two thousand fourteen to lower that speed. Um, so not sure if we needed to do another request to lower it again or or what the.
No, because that's what they requested. They requested to go from forty-five down to thirty-five.
Several residents requesting. Uh, I'll tell you right now, one of them is when you first come off of Bill's Lane, it's a quarter of a mile straight stretch. He's just like, you know, can we please reduce it to thirty-five because they come off Bill's Lane? And don't pay any attention to the forty-five. So just.
So.
Right by it.
So a speed reduction to combat speeding is not something that I would really promote. Um, that's an enforcement. What you end up having is a speed differential. At that point, you have folks that are already not obeying the speed. And then if you lower it to thirty-five, then you increase that differential, which when the rear end or whatever happens, that ends up usually being more catastrophic than it happens.
And so, so we had a request from a citizen. So you know, I guess a question from the board is, does the board want to move forward with having V dot do a study? And and speaking with Mr. Thornton, you know, there are certain criteria that would be in place to warrant going down to thirty-five. Some of it had to do with the the distance of the of the households to the road. And and there are some other criteria you mentioned.
So they, they would look at things. So currently it's forty-five and it requests it to do a speed study um with the hope that it would go to thirty-five. There are a couple of things. So when they evaluate speed, they look at um the nature of the road, whether it's residential, that's the proximity and density that comes to the, to the road. Um, if there are any criteria is what the percentile speed is. Um, when they do a speed study, they don't look at it in the vein of the boards or the requesting party wants it lowered. They look at what should the speed be? Um, the studies here, which can tell you why the speed was reduced to forty-five. It is a possibility though, because of that straight stretch and because traffic is already going faster, that speed increases back to fifty-five.
That's right.
We have a lot more risk. You go fifty-five and ever.
Sorry.
But I don't think it's it's like they're not going to be considering that necessarily. In other words, they're going to be using data and.
It's a data-driven approach.
Yeah.
So that is, that is something to be, that is something to consider. Um, if it is a possibility that it could go, it could go down as well, but it could also.
So is that your district?
No. I think it should have been yours.
Nah, I think it's.
I don't think Dobby's in mine. Where's this at?
That's the fact.
Well, you were my.
I mean, it's in yours. That would be yours.
But you were the one talking to.
Uh, they they reach out to me because I see them all the time at school.
Why don't, why don't you give me the name? And if it's in my district, I'll reach out and his and but.
I think it's in his.
I would say talk with.
The line there.
One of us needs to talk with the person and figure out and explain to him, you know, explain to them what he's telling us is that look, we can do this, but there is a chance that if we do this, it could have the complete opposite effect of what you want to have.
Imagine it would have the opposite effect because I drive a road quite often, drive that car. You don't want to.
So you want to just table it and we'll figure out.
Do you all want to have a conversation with 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 some of the, some of the the residents in that area or or the ones that are talking about it? And then we can move forward and see how how to proceed.
Is that the standard with any forty-five that you want to take thirty-five is that it could go fifty-five? Are you saying that based on your knowledge of that area and that road and the situation there?
It's, it's how you do speed studies. So they, it's, it's all data driven. They look at crash histories. They look at they even present house speed. They look at the crash history. Somebody actually does go out and drive it at speed with instruments to, you know, make sure they can travel it. Um, and they look at several things. And basically I've seen in my experience with V dot, I've seen speeds go up and I've seen them go down.
So I I'd say let's just table it and we'll get together based upon what district it's in, talk to some locals and.
It's one of y'all's.
Yeah. It's, it's right at the line there.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, the only other two things that I think I really had on my list, uh Scott was um was I know we had the the discussion of the safety study on South Boston Road. And I know there was not a lot of agreement with with kind of what the data should uh provide on that. Do you have anything further you want to add to that or?
So you know, like I said in the last meeting, the the data that we looked at, the review during footage, there's, there's just no operational um issues that have been noted. However, you know, we're always happy to discuss whatever options. Um, one of the things I discussed with Mr. Dahl was um the possibility of a transportation safety committee um within the county to sit down and talk with with V dot citizens as well as board members and the county staff to really talk about what what their solutions would be. I did speak with our traffic engineer about um putting in um some speed, uh speed striking, some rumble trips on that area. Um, that is something we can do. The one thing I'll just say to everyone is you know, in the daytime, that's great, but at two o'clock in the morning, folks driving over that, there are a lot of residents that are going to hear that in proximity. So that is something the board wants to pursue. Happy to do it.
We lost started the six eighteen.
Um, so we just had the public hearing back in the spring, I think two groups.
There's a company that all do that.
Yes, sir.
It was two, twenty twenty-five, wasn't it?
Five, maybe a year.
Yeah.
Next year. And one, that was the next thing too. I I know there was some discussion on is that intersection improvements? Is that the best? Is that the best means for those improvements? And I know that's what V dot's data shows.
Right. So we went through and looked at it. Um, there were some comments made at the public hearing about going to a three-stop sign layout and and just basically doing the project a lot cheaper. Um, they did look at that, but our Culpeper District Office as well, the Richmond District, um, or Richmond Central Office looked at it. The reason uh the three-stop signs is is not preferred um or recommended is because of level of service drop in the area. So you could do it with the turn lane would still be required and it would go to a level of service F, which doesn't improve the intersection.
Can you define level of service?
Level of service, so level of service, just like rating paper. Level of service A, green.
Yeah.
Level of service F. Fake.
Okay.
Um, so you have long queuing times. The intersection will be just as dangerous as as today. It's, it's not making it.
Yeah.
To that. In fact, it would actually be a drop in level of service.
I would think so.
What it is. Um, so we did meet. Um, there was a letter written. I believe the board members were copied on it. Um, from um.
Chief Constantino.
Tino, I'm going to thank you. I'm going to mess his name up and I apologize. Um, so our design staff from the district did meet with him. Um, and came up with several options and they appeared to be uh all in agreement when they left. I've included that letter.
And then I sent that to to Mr. True too for the Department of Emergency Services since he does, his department runs calls up in that area as well too. So.
Right. So it allowed for access for emergency vehicles, things like that full time. So um and then it's really just a question of constant communication with V dot offer any needs and emergency management needs.
And 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 was, I probably need to send the sheriff has to because the sheriff has was not, was that sheriff has in that meeting? Do you know? That's all right. Sheriff, I can, I can send you what they're proposing for that when, when that section's supposed to be closed down.
That covers all.
That was all that I have.
So there's anything else?
Uh, I have a couple of things. Um, I know we had brought up one time the uh, this might have been at the last quarterly report, I think. Um, the fifty-five speed limit out in front of the community center, basically from Dixie down to down to the the gas station. Um, there's a lot of folks in that area concerned. Not necessarily, uh, I I think because of the topography more than the speed, but um with the topography, especially the um, you know, the hills there coming out, turning out of their driveways uh right there at the community center, a couple of those uh residents there. And then um some of the folks down towards the BP. Now that that's becoming more of a convenience station rather than a service station or or a or a ma- maintenance shop as it once was. Essentially, um, there's a lot more traffic coming in and out of there. And so people are kind of flying fifty-five coming down there, turning right and slowing down to turn into the BP. And there's not even really a turning lane. You just kind of glide on in there. So there was, I I don't know if we said we would look at maybe doing a study there basically from Dixie to Brimmo, but I I didn't know if there was any update on that or.
So.
Comes outside BP.
You want to get him a Winsville?
Winsville.
Yeah.
Going just back, going past Winsville Lane.
Yeah.
With thirty-five.
So I don't have that. There a study was requested or.
I don't think we requested the study. I mean.
We discussed it though, right?
It was discussed.
Okay.
There's some discussion. We didn't have a resolution received.
So so do, do we want to do a s- a a formal speed study in that section of road from I guess, would it be from the thirty-five going all the way to the, from the, to the county line or or to some area sooner?
I don't know that, I mean, that it needs to be to the county line. I think once you get past the BP, I think what folk and 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 another interesting thing there is that it goes fifty-five. It's again, it's one of those spots at Fork Union that skips a whole tier. It goes fifty-five right down immediately to thirty-five. I think some folks would uh would like to see it sort of tiered and and kind of when you get to Dixie, um, you know, stop it at fifty-five and then kind of have forty-five. Then once you get to to, you know, right there in the center of thirty-five and then kind of pick back up forty-five to fifty-five. I don't know that it needs to be thirty-five from Dixie all the way to BP, but I I've had enough folks in that area. I feel like I wouldn't be my due diligence if I didn't request a study there. Um, so I I guess that would, that would come in the form of a resolution at a future meeting.
Yeah, I mean, so so you want to go all the way from from Dixie, you know, kind of at the, at the interchange intersection there of six and fifteen, kind of past the BP.
Yep.
Okay, the whole.
Exactly.
Okay. Okay. So i- is that something that the board wants? Because if if that's the case, we can bring a resolution.
So is it, so the, the cost of it by a mile, is it, how's that determine how much out of our budget?
So there is an administrative budget to do studies for all of the localities. Um, what that number is, traffic engineering doesn't necessarily tell me, but um, you know, usual cost is about seven grand for a study. Um, it's not charged into your six-year plan budget. Um, the only time we would go into such your plan, traffic engineering budget would be if the board requested a study. And it has been studied, that same segment of road has been studied already in the last five years. And there's not been any kind of significant change in the route or anything. So say we studied something this year and then next year, you know, a bunch of requests came in. There's been that you wanted to study again because it's inside that window of it's already been looked at.
Yeah.
Then I would ask to charge your secondary six-year plan budget for seven grand to do study. But we're studying like this, we're not charging your six-year plan.
So I have a two-sided thought on it. One is that if they come back and they say, yeah, it should be lowered, then that's by the standards that V dot understands it should be. On the flip side, I'd be a little worried about all the people that for all these years have been going fifty-five because although it does roll, it's quite a straight stretch. And I mean, you come out of it'd be fifty-five pretty much from Palmyra all the way to Fork Union right now.
Oh, yeah.
And.
That's fifty-five.
That's why I said fifty-five from Palmyra way to Fork Union. And I just we don't want to create a lot of people getting tickets either, you know? But, but I'm, I'm good with doing a study.
One thing I was thinking about is the firehouse right there. Along with.
Yeah. The boat increasing too.
Being forty-five there would not get that. Every other firehouse in the community has either thirty-five or forty-five in front of them. And that one's got a fifty-five.
I'm just whatever, but I think I had envisioned, I think you had brought it for kind of more right before the firehouse.
That's, that's kind of what I remembered, like.
That, that's why.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I think maybe now I did ring it some bells there that once you come through the stop sign, um, yeah, that that would seem to make sense to me that you'd kind of have. Yeah. Right there at the community center. I mean, you would obviously, if if you're concerned about the firehouse being there and the, in the community center being there, you would want that a little bit further back. So that people have time to slow down so that they're not at their, at their, um, you know, slowing down once they, we all slow down once we get past the sign, right? So you would want to make sure that they're not still going fifty-five. Well, you you teach drivers that, so.
Some people don't slow down.
Um, but yeah, I I I think I could get on board with that too. Yeah.
It's some, some distance before the.
Yeah. Fire. Well, and then that, and that, that kind of gives you that, 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 that's that sort of transition period. Once you get Karen Rogers' house, it's, it's right there where it turns thirty-five and instead of going back and then you're going through, past the academy, past the Baptist church, through the village, that's already thirty-five.
When they went up on the other end of BP.
Yeah.
That, that, that's worth looking at because you know, it, I don't know if there's anything y'all can put lines down or something. But know the difference between Winsmill and BP parking lot. I can tell you that's one of the issues. It gives my kids a difficult time. And I'm going, well, just don't drive and hit a gas down.
It's just continuous.
Yeah. It, yeah, it's just, it, there's no separation between what's the BP's gas, gas parking lot and the terminal to Winsmore.
Yeah.
So. Lines would, the lines would help right there.
So it sounds like maybe we we do want V D, V dot to do something from Dixie to there and 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 take a look at that kind of stretch.
Yeah, but just in here, the conversations actually sounds like two studies.
Yeah.
With different terminal.
Because, because you, because we're not looking to change.
One on the.
We're not, we're not looking to change the thirty-five that's in the Fork Union, that seems, but but kind of on the two ends of it right there.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. We'll, 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 we'll bring a resolution forward to the board.
Okay. Um, and then one and one last thing, I brought this up last time. Mr. Dahl, had you had a chance to discuss with him that right of way that we brought up at the last meeting? I know you made a note. If not, I can.
Refresh my memory.
The wholesale tire shop, um, the, the owner had reached out to me about a concern that there was an easement there that V dot owned or um an entrance there that was V dot owned and maintained that is kind of been deteriorating vastly, especially since the tire shop moved in there and they have big trucks coming in there.
Yep.
Um, they did ask, and I don't know if he's reached out to you or not. He, he said he might, Scott, but I told, I made an assurance that I would bring that up at this, at at this quarterly report. Um, it's um the wholesale tire shop right there. Right past BP actually. Um, and and literally they, they can't touch it legally. Um, and so it's just kind of sitting there getting worse and worse. So.
The pavement issue or is it a?
I'd have to go back a little bit in my text with the gentleman to get back to it. Um.
Let, let me do this. Let me go back and look.
It's a quarter mile past South of Winsmore.
Yeah.
Maybe it has. I don't think so. I think.
Let me, let me go back and look at my emails and texts and let me follow up with you on that. And then I can give you a better idea specifically.
No, I'll, I'll drive by.
Yeah.
I mean, we.
So it says here, V dot owns the right of way to our business and it hasn't been maintained to its full capacity such that it's been diminished in scope, given our increased business traffic. We'd like to see that it's maintained to the fullest attempt uh extent. Employ seventeen plus folks and have a lot of commercial industrial traffic that needs to, the space maintained.
It's a commercial entrance?
So I mean, it's as far as.
It's a business.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a business.
It's a business entrance. We do not maintain. We, we may own the right of way like on fifty-three all the way out, but when there's a break for the entrance, we do not maintain the entrance.
It's a landowner, correct?
The land, the landowner puts in any type of turn lanes or or um, I don't know what the, the.
The, yeah, the, the, whatever the specification.
Yeah.
For the entrance, the curb and gutter, apron.
All right, I'll get with that. I'll, I'll get with him on that.
Because you said, yeah, because V dot may own the, the
Right away.
The right of way, but but the, but the upkeep of of the, if it's a private entrance would be the, would the property owner's responsibility for, for the pavement piece.
Got to cut the grass environment.
Let me, let me go back and look at me and let me follow up with you, Mr. Goat on this one off after this.
Uh, and and I, one more thing, I'm not trying to be a pain, but I think everybody knew that we had this tonight. I'm, I'm joking, but I, it seems like I got three requests of things to bring up. Someone brought up um to me and I won't say the gentleman's name because I'm not sure, quite sure if he was reaching out to me in his capacity as a deputy or as a constituent of mine. Um, but he brought up concerns about um at um at Brimmo Road and West Bottom Road that there's not, I I guess if it's not posted, it's fifty-five, right? And and so essentially what I gathered in the email, reading it as I was rushing out of the award ceremony at Fuma tonight was that um, it's kind of been difficult to enforce because there's no signs there. So I, I, I think the request is, is can we look at possibly getting signs down there? It just to have it posted, it might make it easier for for them to enforce. I.
So to sign the statutory fifty-five.
What's that?
To sign this.
That's what, with the, that's, that's what they asked. And it was also, and and I've always had it That's what, what the, that's, that's what they asked. And it was also, and, and I've always had it, had a hard time and maybe Ms. Booker can help me with this one, but Glenn, Glenn of, you know, Glenn of on.
Glenn Arvin.
Glenn Arvin Drive.
That's just a problem. That's West Bottom turned into Glenn Arvin.
So there's, so there's no speed limit signs that specifically say fifty-five down on that area?
Yes. Yes. That's what, that's what was recommended.
We would need to do a study for that. All we're doing is signing the current.
You don't, you don't need to do.
Okay. All right. I'm glad to finish on these.
About to the rumor sign, it's there. Um, a couple of things. One, uh, I hadn't thought about rumble strip speed noise right there, right there. However, you're coming up sort of just the top of the hill before you hit the curb. Um, there's really not a lot of houses right there. And so I don't know. Do you have the ability to put in a temporary rumble strip? So that we can get community feedback on that. And also are there other technologies that you could use, such as a flashing sign or something along those lines?
So we can look at flashing signs. Um, the most temporary type of rumble strip we would, you'd be able to put in would be the one that's painted down. Um, you know, that's something that mustn't allow them to take out in winter time.
But I, I think if, if it's put in the right spot, knowing someone will be really low.
They're still get your. They all really loud.
They are. I know.
My only thought about.
Wakes me up when I'm driving.
You're gonna love when I say this. My only thought process stuff with North Hill coming up is that's the four people we got right above the sewer plant to get the.
Same one. Like they're a little further down. So it's just a little further down. There's kind of that gap where there's nothing.
So my house on fifty-three, you know, it's a little ways set back in there. Rumble strips there. And every single time somebody drives on it, you know it.
Yeah.
Those houses in Lake Monticello are going to be right on top of those in your, that, that's going to be in there. I'm not saying it shouldn't happen. I'm just saying it's going to be in your house.
You, you're talking about for you, you're talking about the center line.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What I'm talking about is, um. They're, they're like really. Be using with, um, striping.
Oh.
Yeah. So it'd be like three. So it's.
It's gonna be worse than center line.
Yes.
Yeah.
Cause everyone would hit them.
Yeah.
It wouldn't be just the ones that got on.
That got on the center line. Yeah. Every single car is gonna.
What about just painting?
That is the paint.
No, I know. What about just painting? Painting in front of the two exit lines there.
He's saying like, no, like speed, any speed measure, but something to warn someone to slow down in the area.
Pay attention.
I don't know. That's probably going to be a no.
I've got a bucket of.
I mean, we can look at the flashing signs. But the, but given the speed, you know, in fact, it's really hard there at night. I mean, by the time somebody saw that, even if he did with retro reflective paint.
Yeah.
It'd be a distraction more than it would be.
I think it sounds a good idea.
Flashing sign with the. We've got signs up there right now. It's a thirty miles an hour. Yeah, but it's coming up.
So, so, so with all this stuff, you know, there, there was a conversation about the transportation safety group. Does the board want staff, V dot, public safety to spec? Can I kind of create something that's more formal? You know, does, does one or two board members want to be involved? Is it just staffing with V dot or just trying to get some of the boards input on that? Because as, as they said, they're going strictly by data, but you know, there's lots of times there's things that we see that we're on the ground, we're in it every day and.
There's many things we see, like you just did every day that we can, we can bring to your attention.
And, and there, I've, I've been on these in, in other localities and there, there are a lot of success and it doesn't have to be something that meets everyone. Those double me.
Ordinarily. Yeah. That's what I was thinking.
And you know, there's a report out separately to the board, um, if, if, if you all want.
I mean, I was interested in that until the caveats came where you said the stop sign is not feasible. We know there's not enough space for a traffic circle. So basically you took it down to a turn one. Was really the only solution left. So we.
You're talking about the bottom of.
Right. We're just talking about in general.
Ever all traffic.
Good thing.
So Eric and I talked about it a little bit today and my thought was, I mean, certainly if it's there, whoever's appointed will put the time in. But just creating another committee that board members would be on, I think we can certainly convey to staff where the concerns are. I mean, it happens anyway through the board meetings and I don't know that you need board members with an opinion on a couple of roads to necessarily be a part of a committee.
I mean, unless, unless there's a few, I mean, what I.
I was thinking, so we've, we've, we've sat here with all these appointments and saying, we can't, I have places to put people. Might be able to get some of these folks to be on the committee.
Well, I mean, you, you could, I mean, you could have a citizen, you could have citizen representatives too, certainly.
I think we're just creating another governmental committee and just trying to keep government small and not, not do something just for a purpose other than. What's happening? Please be vocal, Tony. I, I just don't know that there's a sense in getting more people involved than I think they can get together efficiently, have a quick meeting, however long it takes about it and deal with it. But if y'all want to get a board member or appoint somebody or.
Let's get those roads best.
What Tim does too. I mean, Tim's on the road. He would like to do, be, correct?
I mean, I'm.
More time.
No, slightly a little bit more time.
And I don't mind being there when I can be there.
So, I mean, I see where the.
All roads than any other human being.
So do we need?
Does that have to be a standing committee? That's, can it just be established with the sunset clause? It says everyone is kind of like we did with what was it? Broadband? I mean, but is there a, is there a, a, I, I, my only question would be is, is, is there, is there that many concerns? I mean, we've all sat here and addressed concerns tonight that, that right here to the, to the man himself, that constituents have brought to us. Do, do, do we need, uh? I mean, what would be the purpose? Just to conduct, discuss ongoing things or, I mean, I.
I, I think the only thing it would, it would maybe do is, is some of the discussion we're having now about maybe some different alternatives versus just what their data is showing. Maybe we could have a better dialogue with V dot where here's what we are actually seeing on the ground. And having that kind of set time with V dot to, to give them some more input into certain things versus them just relying on their data. And because, cause, cause again to their data, when they're using it, it's generally not data. That's from a month ago. It's usually a year or two. Yeah. Out there. So.
No, no offense to you, but I mean, you're, we're talking about Riverside eight for about ten years. So you're not processing, trying to communicate.
Well, and it's not just me.
You know, it was not a Christian view at it. Well, I'm, I mean, no, 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 no offense taken at all. Um, but in that committee, you know, there would be other representation, V dot traffic engineering as well. So that if there were specific questions about like, what does this mean when we're looking at a study? You know, I can give an answer that I can give better, you know, and actually dive down into what that means.
Well, Tony, do you think that would be something that would benefit the concern that you've had there?
I mean, I think we're making progress, which is great, but I'm just saying that, that that's just one isolated instance, you know, and it's ten, ten broad enough. You know, so it's, you know, maybe it's probably the exercise. It's decided it's not.
I mean.
The only thing I'm thinking about is if we did a committee, it would allow more people to get involved and it would streamline. I mean, we're not having fifteen minute conversation on, do we need to do this?
But, but do you, are you saying a committee and a committee with, and a board member? Or are you saying just a committee? What's?
Well, I think ten volunteer again.
And would they like?
Yeah.
Make a recommendation to bring a resolution to us? And here's why we need to make this resolution to ask V dot to do this? Or would, would action directly come from that group?
So I can look at.
Go.
I've always been in the past on how the committees have worked that I've been on with other localities, but yes. Um, so speed studies come in, any, any requests that, that you all get from constituents. Who would meet quarterly, you could then give them to whoever, whoever the representative is, whether that's staff or board member, that is discussed as part of the committee. Right? With public safety, with staff, with V dot in the room to then say, well, is this really a, a speed study that's, that's needed? Or is it something as simple as moving to stop something? Or is it, you know, an entrance that needs to be relocated? Things that then as the discussion happens. Then whoever, whoever the representative is comes back, there can either be a report out or, you know, conversations that happen internally. But then it's, all of these studies have been somewhat vetted by the committee as well as the board members as well as V dot. To where at that point, the resolution can be a consent agenda item with normal discussion or however much discussion you want. And then it just comes through and to Mr. Sheridan's point, it streamlines a lot of the discussion we make that. Not that I don't love standing here. Talking to you all, but.
Um, so if, I don't think we should make it about a board member. If you get hit by a truck, then we're creating a policy of what it is. Um, it sounds like to me that I'm good either way, but it sounds like to me that staff can take care of it and we can use them as a conduit to V dot. And do you, do you agree?
No, I think, I, I think would, I, I think with some of the, some of the traffic, you know, concerns that we're having in different areas, I think between, you know, including public safety, V dot, some staff members on that. I think we could handle that. And I think quarterly is probably, probably a, a good.
And then dovetails also not into just immediate issues, but also planning when you're talking about smart scale tap rings, things like that. So where it might not be a study or something that I can handle with maintenance or CSOI funding, it's, yes, there's a problem here, but the real solution is through a smart scale project or through a future tap. And then that really dovetails into that. And I think having staff involved and, you know, as we go through, there's even two year cycles of, of applications and it fills that list up.
We all did. Last question before I, would, would, would we not, so that we would not have quarterly updates anymore?
No, V dot would.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. But, but, but I think what he's saying is, is because some of these questions would be funneled through kind of the committee and then, so maybe some of this discussion would be, it could be, it could be, could be shorter.
It could be, or I mean, I'm, I'm here.
Yeah.
Long young. But I think a lot of the, do we need to have this discussion? Um, or do we need to have this study? If the board meets and we say, yes, this is worth doing, then it's just a forfeit.
I mean, from my perspective, I'm hesitant, but any more work on staff, when I know they've got stuff they need to be dealing with. And like what Mr. Sheridan, Mr. O'Brien said, I fully agree. We could use these talented people where you might not have the time to go do what I did. Drive to the thing, enter the road from different ways. And some of the citizens that are out there could be doing this.
And I would, I would be concerned about not in, you're talking about eliminating staff from it.
No, no, no. I'm not saying eliminate staff. I'm just saying if, if it's just staff and just V dot, then the bulk of the work is going to fall on the staff who already have their plates full. And if we engage the people who are wanting to volunteer and become engaged at no cost, we're not growing government. We're utilizing people who want to be ga- engaged. Yeah. Growing involvement, being engaged in the community. So I can support that.
Uh, what's the worst that could happen? It falls flat on its face. It doesn't produce results. We haven't really heard anybody.
We just spent, look what we did with, we've this, just this year, we've eliminated two or three of the ones that we had previously that kind of had stopped needing and the purpose had kind of went away. So, you know, if it, if it, let's try it. It costs us nothing. And if it doesn't prove fruitful, then we try something different. So, so just, just one thing, just to add, just to, so we can kind of, kind of get, get some resolution. I mean, so if we do something with citizens, we're going to need to create something maybe a little more formal, because there's going to need to be formal appointments for that. Whereas if it's, you know, it's just staff, it's internal and, and maybe the structure's not there. And again, I'm not saying that we don't want to use citizens, but there maybe needs to be a slightly more of a formal process to that.
They're like.
Yeah. That's exactly what I was thinking about.
So bring us something at a later meeting to look at it, what the structure of it and the, what the meat and potatoes of it would look like. And is that what?
I don't think there's really anything to bring in there.
Well, I mean, but if, if you want citizens involved, I think there's, I think there is something that, that.
I mean, so basically you, if you created a, you know, road task force, you have to determine how many citizens are going to be on the task force. How many, um, staff members are they going to have bylaws or is it going to be more a formal structure?
I, I, I would, I would say, and, 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 and I, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Hodge. I think if you're getting citizens involved with it, and not that it's a bad thing. I think, I think when you get more of those formal boards, I, I will tell you that creates more, that creates more work to staff than, than if staff's just involved. Okay. Now, that's just my, I mean, again, with, with having, knowing what we did with the care task force before, you know, we kind of had that going for a while. Um, like I said, that's just by two cents. I mean, it, I mean, we can certainly do it. My thinking was to save you work. Yeah. And if, and if it's going to create work for you, then that's probably not the direction of what we want to do.
Don't want to create more work. Just trying to.
Yeah.
Get where we're stranded on.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, you need somebody to say where we're at or what we want.
I mean, it's all, it's all ultimately up to the board for how the board wants it to be. And so we, we can, we can, we can do it however. I'm flexible either way. I just do not want to, I agree with Chris that you don't want to create bureaucracy. And I do not want to distract you guys from your primary task day in, day out. We have enough important business that needs to be done. Um, I was just thinking that use the citizens that want to become involved to lighten your load. But if it's going to create a heavier load for you, then that might be counterproductive.
Anybody else?
We can discuss this in later day.
I would say.
We need to move on.
Yeah.
I think it's an easy decision now. I mean, can we just say?
Well, there's a motion or there's not.
Yeah. We'll just, I'm just, we'll restart the conversation another time and then we'll go through more conversation regarding what we discussed today and so on.
I mean.
It's either move on or vote on it now. Somebody make a motion or let's move on.
I mean, if the board doesn't, if the board doesn't make like a formal motion to create someone with citizens, I, I think it's probably a good idea from a staff standpoint to, to at least give it a shot here a little bit. And, and kind of give it a test run to see how it works. And if we find that it's from just a staff standpoint, that maybe it's not producing the results that we want, well, then.
Sounds like you're asking for it.
No, it's definitely.
No, no. I mean.
Oh, okay.
This occurred anyways, because JM used to work with you closely from the planning department. I've seen multiple things that he would be working.
Well, yeah, I mean, there's definitely, there's definitely, you know, myself, there's definitely a, 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 a planning, you know, component. There's a public safety component to some of this. So I mean, I think we have the people that can be involved with it without creating something more formal. And if we find it doesn't produce the results we're looking for, we can, we can just disband that without a formal.
That sounded like a suggestion.
Yep. Uh, I would say, well, it's, it's.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay.
Anything else you'd like to add, Scott?
Sir?
No, I'll, I'll reach out to Scott.
Great. Thank you for your time. All right. Uh, see Children's Services Act, semi annual report, Mr. Mullins.
Good evening. Hey, hello. Yeah, I know we're at seven o'clock. It's approaching, so I will try to be as brief and brilliant as possible on this. Thank you. So, uh, as you all know, this is a semi annual report that is actually part of my job duties as a program manager for the Children's Services Act. So I do this one in June, um, and one, another one in December. The one here is to, um, determine whether or not we need additional funding just to get through, uh, the remainder of this fiscal year, as well as talk about some, um, issues that the board would probably be interested in, um, were keeping on their radar. Uh, over the next fiscal year, um, as it pertains to, you know, the program and expenditures related to that. So for this fiscal year, um, the board, um, or the board appropriated about two point nine, five million dollars of, um, funding, uh, for the purchases of services. And these are, uh, community based services. These are educational services. These are residential services. Uh, these is support for, um, youth and foster care. And, uh, the goal that my program tries or my position tries to do is work with our two, our two public bodies to try to keep those expenditures under two point nine five million dollars. So I don't have to come back in June to ask for more money. And the good news is this year, it looks like we will not be, uh, be requesting any funding this, um, for the remainder of this fiscal year. As of today, we have, um, expended, uh, or spent as well as, um, set aside to spend in the near future of two point nine, uh, two point nine two million dollars. So leaves about a balance of about thirty-one thousand dollars, which is, which is a little bit higher than, uh, we had remaining in the last fiscal year. However, last fiscal year, we, uh, had a little bit less than a hundred thousand dollars, um, than we did this year. So our expenditures this year are actually a little bit higher compared to last fiscal year, about a three percent increase, which I know an increase is never something we want to have. But compared to the state average, which is about six and a half percent, or six and a half percent, we're doing better than a lot of other localities outside. And this just shows, um, a trend of spending that we've done with our program over the past 10 years. Now you'll note at the, uh, now you know, uh, at the end where it has for this fiscal year, that the amount's a bit higher than last fiscal year. This is a normal bump and that is because we are still, uh, waiting to get, uh, back a lot of invoices and requests from vendors, uh, for the past fiscal year. So we have July and August to, for those vendors to, um, put in their invoices, to put in their requests and, uh, so we can pay that off. And so typically by August, that number goes down significantly, uh, based on current projections, we're expecting, uh, this to decrease. Uh, based on current projections, we're expecting, uh, this to decrease anywhere from, uh, two hundred to four hundred fifty thousand dollars. Then the next slide. Um, and what's interesting is that even though we've spent about a hundred thousand dollars already, that's, uh, more than, uh, the same time last year, are this, um, this trend in spending is actually showing a decrease month over month. So combined with that, that's why we're thinking we're getting, we're going to be, um, getting a much larger, um, surplus this fiscal year compared to last fiscal year, which, you know, is never a bad thing. Okay, go ahead. Next slide. Um, what trend has come up though, is that the number of youth that we've been serving, uh, this, uh, past year is actually, uh, gone down compared to last year. Um, we've, uh, the number of youths has gone down by about 12% last year. We served about a hundred twenty one this time last year. Uh, this year, we'll only be only served about a hundred sixty youth so far. Uh, despite that, um, with our expenditures are a little bit higher. So what we're seeing is fewer youth, but the youth that we are funding, their needs are being increased significantly. Uh, the two big, uh, areas that we've seen huge increases are, one, is educational day assistance. So, um, as I've said in the past, with, there is a youth that's currently enrolled in Flavanna County Public Schools that has educational needs above and beyond, um, than what the schools can adequately, uh, provide. Then the schools, uh, will then send that youth out to a private day school, um, typically outside of county. We have one up in, in the county of Inzian Crossroad, the Lafayette School. But, um, the number of students that we have that need these types of, um, special educational needs, uh, far exceeds what Lafayette can provide. So we send quite, we send approximately on average about twenty, twenty one, um, children out of the county. Um, but those expenses have increased by twenty five percent. So what that means is that the youth that are going in or out are going to programs that are extremely specialized and typically have a higher annual cost compared to, um, compared to other, um, educational programs. So when we talk about the needs have increased, that's one of the things we're talking about. The other increase that we're seeing here is an increase in residential placements. And this is when the youth have to be, uh, has to leave, uh, be taken out of the family home and, uh, placed into a residential treatment program so that they can safely get the help they need to keep, uh, to keep them happy, healthy and safe. So the past couple of years, we've done very well in try and, uh, accomplishing our mission in making sure that we have as few children going into residential treatment as possible. This last fiscal year though, um, that trend's gone, or we've gone the opposite direction than that trend. Uh, as you can see, our expenses are about two hundred fifty percent higher than last year. Um, it's about a seventy five, it's a seventy thousand dollar increase with that. Um, and that number is expected to increase even more. Um, last couple of fiscal years, um, when we've come around this, uh, we've come to this time, we've typically have had zero children in residential, um, treatment programs, which is, you know, a good thing to achieve. Uh, however, this year, we currently have, uh, have several residential treatments completed. And as of today, we have three children currently in residential placements. Uh, one of them has been in, in their placement for approximately nine months. So when that happens, we, there's a daily rate associated with that. Um, from the time they enter the program until the time they leave. So the longer the children, the child is in a residential placement, the higher our expense, our expenditure, uh, become. Next slide. Um, and again, and this, and this has analysis with the reasons for these increases. And again, the number of youth that are in day placements are by a hundred and seventy five percent. That one child is, I just told you about, he has been in residential, um, so, uh, in placements, um, as of today, longer than the total amount of residential days we paid for the entire fiscal year last year. That's just one placement. We've got three others that are currently active right now that we are expecting to be, uh, in a placement for a minimum of six months. So, um, if we, if there's a place where we need to target expenditures, it's this one right here. Uh, the other one, the one is the increase in average cost of education placement is up twenty five percent. This is, this is in line with statewide trends. So no matter locality, we're all seeing big increases in our educational placements. And this has been a concern, a big problem that, uh, our state agency that oversees our programs, the Office of Children's Services, has been known about for years and we're still trying to figure out how to, um, how to reduce or help, uh, control those costs. So, um, definitely, yes, let me know. Um, one thing that has not caused an increase year over year, um, is what's called spent is, um, spending we have what's called wraparound services for children with educational disabilities. So if a student in Flavanna County is eligible for special education, they're eligible to also receive funding for community based services outside of schools. Um, in the past few years, that number has increased significantly. When I first started, um, this position back in, uh, two thousand seventeen, we were spending maybe five thousand dollars a year on this, uh, budget line. Last year, we would actually end up spending, uh, approximately three hundred twenty four thousand dollars um, on that spending, on that line. This year, we, uh, we have seen only a four percent increase. Uh, the number, at the first of the miscalculation in the, in the slide there, I said it was increased by fifty one, by a thousand one hundred dollars. Should have been fifteen thousand one hundred dollars. So that was more of a typo. But given the fact that, um, we had a four percent increase this year compared to a ninety three percent increase last year. Um, I, we're, we're going, that, that trend is actually going in a very good direction. And, uh, one question that I know has come up in the past is, um, how is this being affected by the new position and how to open up the schools? The mental health coordinator. Um, it's hard to, you know, it's hard, it's, it's hard to associate correlation with causation, as you, many, many of you well know. But, um, the amount of mental health services that they've been able to sort of introduce and implement into the school district this year, um, has been i- i- increased by like a exponential factor. It is like, it is very much like night and day. What's great is one of the agencies that are practices that they use for this is actually, um, homegrown here in the county, Flavanna County Council. So not only are they, um, helping a lot more youth with their amount of health needs in the schools, um, but it's also helping us keep these, control those expenditures. We think, uh, as well as making sure that we're supporting local businesses and keeping those, that money here in the county. Next slide. Um, but those, um, but that is, um, what we're expecting for the next year or so. Um, that being said, I'll always leave it open to you all for any questions you may have.
Anybody?
Good job, Mr. Voice.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Ms. Mullins.
Next, we'll have, uh, Department of Emergency Services, New Station Three in Kent Store, Mr. Tru. No pressure on time, by the way.
Uh, so what I'm requesting is approval to move the Kent Store staffing that was originally designated for the EMS agency that was donated in.
When was that officially?
Yeah, last.
Last, yeah, last fall in twenty twenty three, move them over to the Kent Star Firehouse in Company Three with support of the fire chiefs from the county and the EMS Subcommittee of the FRA and redesignate EMS Station Three for supplemental reserve storage of units and to turn the primary use into a training facility, um, within the Kent Store area.
That's good.
That's it.
That, that.
Any questions?
Nope. Yeah, and and again, there's, there's really no action. We just wanted to, again, the, the kind of the committee kind of came up with this to, to kind of make it a better combined system.
Yeah, it's continued. So it will be essentially the same model that we're running in the, in the Fork Union District as of right now. Um, we've got two subcommittees that I'm a member of, and then one is the fire chiefs, um, with our department. And then we have an E M subcommittee and we're working on a regular basis to bring Flavanna into a system type of an environment rather than a solo siloed type of environment that currently exists.
So, so no approvals needed. We just wanted to kind of inform the board and and this was kind of the, you know, kind of the way that we're going specifically since we had a donation of of that building. But there, I think there's still use, there's good secure storage for our, for our reserve apparatus in that, in that structure.
thoughts or questions? All right, thank you. Uh, TJ PDC Rural Housing Study, Laura Jean.
Telen, you've got it right. It's rare that people get it right on the first try. Um, good evening, Commissioner. Uh, I'm sorry supervisors. Um, I am Laura Jean Telen. I'm from the TJ PDC and I am just here to talk a little bit about this potential housing study that we're working towards and whether Flavanna would like to be a participant. Um, so in two thousand nineteen, we did our first regional housing study, um, to try to get a baseline. It was the first time that it happened and basically we were able to see all the different ways that housing was shaping up at that time. This is pre-COVID, so the data really needs to be looked at again. Um, if we'll go to the next slide. So that's really hard to read, so I will share with you all what it says. Um, these are some of the key takeaways that we saw for Flavanna specifically in two thousand nineteen, knowing that of course this has changed a lot since then, most likely. Um, at the time, there was a six percent increase in the median sales price of houses. Um, and Flavanna had the lowest median sales price of all six of our jurisdictions, and it was under two hundred thousand dollars at the time. I can only imagine what we will find next. Um, it will be very different, I think. Um, households from the thirty to fifty percent of AMI, uh, income range were the most severely cost burden in the region. Cost burden, meaning they are paying more than fifty percent of their income on housing expenses alone. Um, so at the time, thirty six percent of that group were paying more than half of their income on housing costs in Flavanna County. Um, and then when we looked at homeowner households from zero to thirty percent of AMI, almost two thirds spent more than half of their income on housing costs. Um, and then we saw that Flavanna County had the highest percentage of households who owned their homes who had severe cost burdens, meaning they were paying more than fifty percent of their income on housing. Um, and at the time, we saw that eighteen percent of the housing units here were vacant um, and that less than forty percent of the population in our whole rural areas was, uh, under thirty four years old. Um, so those were the kinds of things that we were looking at. It's about sixty pages long, so I just kind of pulled out some highlights. Um, and some of that has been used to apply for grants. Some of that has been used to help with comprehensive planning in different parts of our region um, to make decisions about how money gets spent, things like that. We go to the next slide. So thinking of that as our kind of baseline study, we're thinking about this twenty twenty five housing study as building off of that and digging down into more depth to really understand what's happening in each of our localities. Um, so we want to know, can people afford to live and work in Flavanna County? And specifically, can teachers or CNAs or mechanics afford to work here? And so I also afford to live here if they work here or work in the region. Um, and then how do we maintain the rural sense to the place that we live while also making sure that the people who need to live here can live here and can afford to live here and can afford to even maintain their homes if they do happen to own one. Um, with each of our localities, we want to really dig down into the solutions that might only work in that locality. Flavanna is actually so different than Louisa, right? So it's not just a regional study, it's looking at specifically what needs to happen and what are the solutions that would actually work in each location. I've been working pretty closely for the past six to eight months with the researcher from Virginia Tech who would be conducting this. We would be consulting with her. Her name is Mel. Um, if you came to the twenty twenty three housing, uh, summit, um, she was one of the speakers, uh, from Virginia Tech, if you went to that breakout group. Um, and she has done studies like this around the state. Um, and has, um, I've been actually attending the Augusta area summits where they've been talking about the study that she just completed for them. And it's been amazing seeing how it's creating a lot of mobilization of, okay, what can we in the community do now that we understand really what's happening in our community with housing? What are we going to do with that information? Um, and in some of speaking with her, and I have copies of the scope of work that I can share with you if you want to see the draft so far. Um, she understands that there is data and then there's how you interpret it. And she wants to really spend a lot of time working with people in each locality to talk about how do we actually want to interpret this data based on what we know as citizens who actually live here. Um, and that has felt really good to know that that's both her expertise and her experience, how she's conducted studies in the past and how she would do it here. Um, she also has built into the scope of work that their staff would be training us, meaning whoever wants to participate. So it could be staff from each locality. Already a few nonprofit staff have said that they want to be part of getting trained, um, staff from TJ PDC. Any of you guys could join in the trainings. It would be kind of open ended. And so, um, she would be training, there's seven different trainings built in and she would be training us to collect the data so that in the future, when we want to do another study, we can actually do it within our region, that there's the people with the skills. So collecting the data, analyzing it. So we would actually be pulling the data and then kind of doing homework. She'd kind of be teaching us how to analyze it in a way that could replicate this study later when we want to do updates. Since right now we don't have that capability, we have to hire out, um, to update that to nineteen study. Um, so offering a ton, um, and we really see this as an opportunity to really know what we're dealing with, to have looked regionally, to have looked locally, um, to have talked to people, uh, in depth work to really identify what are the voices that we're missing, because we know we hear those same voices sometimes over and over. But what are the voices that we're missing? Um, and how do we make decisions moving forward with, with real concrete knowledge from our citizen? Um, and then of course, pulling in funding through grants and things like that. They want to see these kinds of pieces of data. Um, so, um, moving to the last slide. What I'm asking of you tonight, um, we are going to get the majority of the funding for this from Virginia Housing. I've been working with them. Um, they're very much in support of the work that we're doing here. Um, we would love a letter of support from you as the Board of Supervisors just saying that you would like to see a study like this happen in our region, um, if you are in support of it. And then I'm not asking for this tonight, but this is just kind of introductory conversation. But as it moves forward, if you would love to, if you would like to participate in the study, then contributing some funding to it, it would probably be five to ten thousand dollars um, in order to be included as, as a focus locality in the study. Um, so that's just something for you to think about and then I can share more information with you over time if you'd like to participate. And if you have any questions.
Thoughts or questions?
I think, I think it's, uh, you know, a lot has changed from two thousand nineteen. I don't think that I participated in the housing study previously. Um, and I'm not even sure whether we, oh, this broker, I think went to the, to the center. There, but I don't think we actually participated. And I know that it had a presentation, hasn't been made by Mr. Smith. The other counterpart, two or three years ago too. Uh, but there was, there were a lot of, there was very good segments, a lot of good key takeaways, but there, um, you know, the costumes of that have continued to rise. Uh, we do have some things that are changing. There's some housing coming into the area. Uh, we're doing a population study, you know, for schools in particular, so the timing might be very helpful as well here too. Um, and, uh, and of course, mountain prices continue to soar in the area. We're seeing, you know, significant amount of homeless growth, much of that being put upon in Charlottesville. But the impact of that was like how it's changing. Charlottesville, Charlottesville has really revamped their zoning in part due to the housing prices and the homelessness area. So, you know, Charlottesville is kind of hot for the other areas here. And when it changes, we change.
Others? All right. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
And so, and so, so just, just, just to con- continue, they're looking for a letter of support for their funding application. Is board fine with me providing some letter of support for that? And then obviously from the funding aspect, you don't need to know that now.
That would probably be coming later in the year.
Okay. I mean, I've just got, so it's. And one way I want to support that, while, um, if there's funding from the state or from Virginia Housing, is that going to likely include, uh, matches?
My understanding is that no, it will not. It's just that the study will just cost more than what they're able to give us. So that's why we're also seeking funding from localities. Um, we did actually receive a small grant from Dominion Energy recently to help go towards this. So we're kind of trying to pull funding from a variety of sources.
I mean, I, I could be okay with number one, but to me, it's not going to tie me to number two.
Yes, absolutely.
I, I, I was thinking the same thing. And the one thing that went through my mind is that the very last meeting we had, we discussed funding the, um, population study. And if you ask me, do I fund this or do I do a population study? A population study, I think is a higher precedence priority. It's something I need to do.
You know, it, there's a lot of different funds that come from.
Yeah.
You haven't figured out what we're going to fund that from, but this is, you know, we don't have enough, five thousand dollars. Small number. Education, get out of it. Housing in the area, that's.
I think, I think the first one's right in the. I think, I think the first one's right, and the second one, we can just look at all our options and speak to players.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Flavanna County Housing Needs, Kim Highland, Executive Director.
Good evening, everybody. It's great to see you, Chairman Supervisors. Um, first of all, thank you, guys. You guys did give us the biggest boost in our funding this year. So I think that really speaks to you guys really understanding what we're doing in the community and that growing. And I look forward to, I think it's my job to continue your education and um increase your involvement. We're a housing and agricultural community, uh residential and agricultural. That's what we do. We all have houses here. Um, this is really i- important stuff right now. Um, let's move forward. Is it Mr. Falcon? Um, I'm going to go through, I want this to be a little bit interactive with you guys. I want to bring you up today. But I think a lot of this stuff needs to be taken offline and have some more in-depth conversations. These are some really broad and big topics regarding housing, and it's just too much to cover in ten fifteen minutes here. Um, let's um, let's just go. First of all, I want to update you guys on Central Virginia Regional Housing Partnership. So this was something that was started by TJ PDC, and thank you very much. I am going to piggyback a little bit off of what Laura Jean shared. They have been fantastic partners with us. Laura Jean and I have worked very closely. We brought a lot of home and HBG funds to Flavanna County. I think we're at over a hundred thousand dollars just in HBG funds this year. And there was a total of about a hundred eighty thousand for the five counties. Um, so we're doing very well with that. Um, Central Virginia Regional Housing came about right around when I started in twenty twenty as the Housing Director. And um, I was a little confused as what the purpose was at first. But the idea was to bring everybody involved in housing into the same room. So the developers, nonprofits, and the local government. And I think it's a great idea, and it's a great forum to do that. CBRHP being in Charlottesville for most of the meetings has been more urban and Charlottesville focused. Um, so at one of the meetings, we suggested having a rural housing subgroup in discussions. So we've been able to get that started. Um, Nelson, Albemarle, Flavanna, and Louisa have all been involved. Um, not green so far. I'm not sure why they haven't been involved. Um, thank you to Moselle Booker for coming. Also Jennifer Schnack was uh was there. Um, tying together economic development with housing. Um, a lot of supervisors from Albemarle and Nelson County were there. The um, the uh County Administrator for Nelson, one of the Deputy Administrators from Louisa County. Um, so it was a very engaging and in-depth deal. What do we need as a rural county to improve housing in our areas? Our questions and our answers are very different from an urban area. And we need more engagement to really find good solutions for that. So I think this was a great forum. Um, and I think as we increase, you know, I'd like to see more people involved in it. Mr. Hodges coming to our next board meeting for the Housing Foundation. We're going to have that um next door on July eleventh. So anybody, any of you are always welcome to come to those board meetings. It's always a little bit difficult. So, um, we appreciate you getting involved in that, but if you guys want to get a little bit more involved in it. Um, I think we have a voice in this, and we need to bring them our solutions and our questions and our needs. So that they can address it. So we've kind of stepped back and said, you know, you guys are doing, you know, your own thing. We're doing our own thing. We're, you know. Flavanna Louisa Housing is is picking up in this area. What needs to be done? What do you guys want to see? What do you want? What do we need here? Um, and it's, and it is interesting that she brings this needs assessment up. What do we need in Flavanna County to improve housing here? How does that affect economic development? How does it affect tourism? Um, so far, if you could turn to the next one, please. I'm not going to go through all this, but I wanted to kind of give you guys an idea of the in-depth conversations we've had. Um, this was sort of, we got to identify the problem first, right? We decided infrastructure, um, education of the of the local Board of Supervisors, which I think we're all very engaged with each other on this. Um, funding sources and staffing of housing agencies were the difficult parts for rural areas. Um, urban areas, they get automatic CDBG funds. They get other funds automatically. We have to apply, as you guys know, for every dollar that we get. Um, so identifying what our needs are, which we're finding out in the Mountain Hill Project right now, right? We have to build V dot specific roads to get to it. We have to get well septic, right? We don't even have water and sewer. So infrastructure is a major demand. Um, and I definitely invite you guys to engage in that in the future if you have an interest. Uh, go ahead to the next one, please. Um, we had, uh, just, I think Flavanna was a little neglected in having housing repairs. We have stabilized that. Um, we haven't trunkeyed any, but we're, it's, we're not inundated with the number of calls. We're able to at least satisfy every call, point them in a direction. Um, many of the home sites, though, are just too severely damaged to, for us at the level of funding we do. We are directing a lot of people to USDA five oh four program, very, very time-consuming. Um, more difficult than a mortgage application. Uh, these are people who may not be very educated. Wanda Armstrong's done a good, good job of really walking these people through the process. But um, the demands are very, very high for that program. Um, and we don't have other funding sources to do fifty and hundred thousand dollar rehabs on houses. So we need to identify some other sources. I think, you know, you, you guys want to have increased tourism here, and if we have severely blighted areas. How do you bring people in and show them our peacolic setting when we have severely blighted areas where people need serious help? Um, but that's something I think we need to have a serious conversation about. There are funds available for us to do that that won't cost Flavanna County money, but will bring funds here. And we use local contractors, so that brings money into the pockets of Flavanna residents. Um, the needs assessments are required. So I did come up with a stat. It's, it's funny that you mentioned that. Um, I looked up the median home price for January twenty twenty was two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. April of twenty twenty-four, it was three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. So those are the numbers we need. Those are the stats we need so that we can apply for funding. Get more money into Flavanna County to help those that are are in in the middle class and the lower poverty areas. To help them. Uh, and I've used these figures before. Median home age in Flavanna is twenty-six years old. But if you go drill down to Fork Union, the median home age is seventy. So those are really significant stats. Then you pile on top of that, more of those people are elderly. More of those houses are in the eighty thousand dollar um or below assessment range. They're, they're in rough shape. Um, next one, please. Um, we do have a lot of um activities and opportunities for funding. Um, I'm going to run through, go through the mountain, mountain road update, mountain hill road update real quick. Um, and talk about our essential home affairs. Spark funds I've applied for for Virginia Housing, two point one million dollars that are reserve mortgage funds. That allows us to take people who are specifically in our area, apply for a mortgage. They have to be under eighty percent AMI. So teachers, firefighters, you know, all, all the people we're talking about, they get a one percent reduction in the interest rate. So these are things that we, there are programs out there that we can access that help local people not be so cost burdened with their housing. Um, I have set up a meeting with the Commissioner of Revenue and the New Treasurer for next week. We decided this week would not be so good for the new treasurer, having her first intake. Um, but we're going to talk about those demographics. What are they seeing in the county? Where do they have needs? Yeah, we, we know our community very well. What can we do to help alleviate the burdens on for taxing, right? Who, who else is taking advantage of tax relief programs? Um, you know, Mr. Sheridan is extremely aware of where those pockets of need are and what we could be doing differently. And I think Ms. Rittenhouse is going to be very much on board with um being able to increase. The, the, the revenue into the county to make sure, but she wants to make it equitable and fair to the people. And how do we do that, right? Who goes to, who goes to collections? How do we actually get people out of that cycle? Um, the next one, please. Um, this is just, I don't know if you guys saw this latest um uh drawing for the concept plan for Mountain Hill. Um, you can move to the next one, please. It just shows, you know, a little bit of, I, I couldn't remember where we last left that. So this is sixteen one-bedroom units. Um, next one, please. This is my budget for right now. Um, it's really not as complicated as it looks. The whole budget is on the left. All of the green and blue is funding that has been identified and or committed. The yellow are the areas where I need to identify funding. So about one point six six seven million dollars. Um, you go to the next one, please. Um, we'll check with this in a different way. Can you go to the next one? There we go. So our funding needs, the total budget, two point four. We've, we've committed about uh seven hundred forty thousand. The fa- the road infrastructure, obviously being an important one. Um, go down to the next one. So interestingly enough, there is a different CDBG. You guys have heard me talk about CDBG. It's not the rehab one. This is a different one. It is specifically for community development. We can combine infrastructure and housing. It can cover two activities. There's a planning grant for a hundred thousand dollars. There's a competitive grant for two activities for one and a half million dollars or three activities for one point seven five. So you guys remember I needed one point six seven. We have three activities. We need well, septic, and then we need infrastructure with the roads, and we need housing. We could finish out the entirety of that project, and it wouldn't cost Flavanna taxpayers any money. It would take some uh staff time. I've been talking to Kelly Harris about it. Um, and we, we need to sit down and have a more serious conversation that if we want to get this project completed in a very timely manner. We have options here. Do you, do you want to see this happen in a more expedient fashion? Um, we do, you know, would have some requirements on staff. But um, I've gotten a lot better at finding grant opportunities that could bring money into Flavanna that is already out there. We should be taking advantage of it to improve our community. Um, you can put it in this one, I don't care. Okay, um, this is just example of the modular homes. We're, we've gotten great pricing on that. Um, about seventy thousand dollars a unit. So about uh ninety-six thousand finished out complete. So we've got fantastic pricing. Um, is there anyone? Um, what I'm asking of you guys is let's have some more in-depth conversations. What do you want to see? Um, there's no more Columbia Task Force, is that what I understand?
Correct. That was disbanded. I don't remember the date. Yeah, correct.
Do we need that again? Do you guys want that again? Do you want us to be active in it?
I wrote down Columbia is the first place we need to look if we want to start improving landscape for tourism.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you drive through there and you want to be a little bit, I mean, we know the people down there. We feel comfortable. But I can imagine people who, who drive through, go through a little faster than than the speed limit. Um, and I was at, you know, what statistics do you guys want to see? If you have ideas, you know, let's get together with Commissioner of Revenue and the Treasurer and see what kind of statistics we can pull. Yeah, getting, getting this needs assessment is critical. I don't know all the benefits of the population study, but in my view, the how, you know, we're going to have the population we have. I think that the needs assessment, I don't know if it would cover that because part of that is the elderly, right? That tie into that and what kind of needs they have. We have a lot of people that we serve say, I don't know if I can stay in Flavanna because of the taxes on my house. Right? I retired here because it, it was a very economical place to retire. Now I don't know if I can stay. Um, and continuing to maintain, you know, how do we best serve the local people, maintain our rural character, right? What do you guys want us to do for Colonial Circle? Um, I don't know who in the developer is beholden to, you know, making sure they fulfill eighty percent AMI apartments. Can we help to make sure we get Flavanna people in there and that they're covered and that they actually get first shot at being renters? Um, what?
I think that would be a communication thing, I mean, a clinical group is the one that's adding part, part properties and kind of.
Okay.
Certainly having that residence be the first to have.
Yeah, and we're already set up, you know, to kind of, you know, process those. Um, Kelly and I have been trying to figure out who exactly we would need to speak to.
Reach out to Jim Margaret.
It was uh Bill William Park.
William Park.
William Park.
Okay. Yeah, I think it, it shows, you know, the counties involved in that, they, they will.
I know that they've reached out to some of our teachers.
Good.
Some of our young teachers.
Excellent. Okay, good.
Uh, I know that that is happening.
Excellent. And do they gear that, um, the rent to what their salary is, or do they have sort of a good?
It's percentage based.
I think it's forty, forty to eighty percent.
Sixty to eighty.
Sixty to eighty AMI, and then it should be thirty percent of their income would be their rent. So that they're not cost burdened. So, yeah, that's an excellent.
They, they came, whatever your AMI.
They have to, they have to make those.
Right. Right.
So, and by the way, all that's what I asked Mr. Doll for us to re-review as a board and, and have that type of data. That we said we had the discussion another day because of the time. So we'll, we'll be bringing that back up.
Okay. All right. I'm glad to, you know, help out wherever we can. Um, you know, I have a personal interest in making sure that works well in Flavanna County. So, um, yeah, give me your feedback. Um, I'll be following up with you guys. And if, you know, if you guys want to get together and, you know, whoever asks, you know, your, your area and your area are probably the most cost burdened areas with the highest poverty rates. But it's all over the county. We service everything, not as much in the lake, but um, we do have, you know, clients in the lake. Yeah.
Yeah, you got more than you think.
Uh, yeah, and we have a lot of, you know, of course elderly um residents in the lake, so. Yep. Yeah, so we're trying to broaden what we do. So you guys need to give us feedback. And I can find, you know, different programs, different funding. I want to cater it to what we.
I don't know if we'll be able to start the care task force back itself.
Okay.
But as far as looking into Columbia, absolutely. We've talked about it a couple of years ago. And then between weather and whatever, just haven't had a chance to do it anymore, but we need to get involved with talking about.
Yeah, I think getting something like that up and running again, that's going to address the needs of that area would be very helpful.
Uh, we got to have this very short, so we, but yeah, you got two point one million dollars for sixteen houses. That's roughly. But that worked out to like a hundred sixty thousand dollars.
So for a mortgage, it'd be, it'd be three hundred, we're, we're estimating seven houses, yeah.
Oh, I thought you had sixteen houses.
So that, those are two different programs. Spark funds are for um people applying for a mortgage. Um, so that is a whole different, yeah, that's a, that's an additional. The modular, yeah. Yes, yes, that is correct. Those are going to be rental units, though.
Yes, but I mean, still.
Yeah.
You're still financed to that.
And Virginia Housing is actually, and, and DHCD are reinforcing that we need to change. Um, the, the development and home construction concepts to reflect one and, one, two, three people households more often.
That's that, that is going to be a lot more.
Yeah.
Can't afford.
Right.
Place like that, but the quality of that community matters. So what you're doing there is.
Yeah, and we can bring those same modular homes all over the county. Two bedroom, we have, the two bedroom ones are going to be a hundred forty thousand dollars with everything. Complete.
Three forty, uh, three forty-five, sorry.
Right, right. Yeah, we can get a two-bedroom home, so people already have land. They have all their utilities. If we can get the home, um, you know, destroyed and then put a new one up there, we're, we ha- we can find funding to do that.
Okay. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I, what I would suggest at seven oh five, so we're a couple of minutes past of when we want to start our work session. What I would probably suggest is tabling the Action Matters and Consent Agenda in closed session until after the solar work session. And maybe just give us five minutes to, to break down and transition our, our stuff and, 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 and. Kind of get the meeting started over in the uh.
You have one more presentation.
No. No. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good with that. You? Everybody else good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and, and then we will not be coming back here to, to finish the meeting, do we need?
Yeah, so.
That should be fun because we don't have a public here, right?
We don't.
No, just two action matters.
So, yeah, if you want in the motion to say table, but we'll be in your motion state where we'll be in the board's room. And we bring back these items.
Matters uh till after the presentation of course.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Brian, thinking about Mr. Sheridan, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes a five zero.
Alright, so. No, I'm muted now.
Presentations in that order, so we figured we'd have them each person come up and you know. Kind of gave them, you know, roughly fifty minutes for, you know, presentation, you know, we can do some questions and we'll have some time. Either if you want to ask some individual questions or kind of collectively at the end. So I think firstly, uh, like I said, well, I want to thank everyone for being here and thank the presenters. And um, I think we will start with Mr. Barry Hill, come on up. Yeah, if you want to come on up here and so you can talk, maybe you can stand, you can sit, whatever, uh, whatever you feel most, most comfortable doing. And I've got your presentation up and we'll go from there.
Great, well, hey, everybody, uh, thanks for having me, uh, my name is Aaron Berryhill, I'm the Solar Program Manager at Virginia Department of Energy. Uh, just a little bit about my role, um, it's really just to serve as a resource for local governments on solar energy related topics. So not exclusively large scale solar, but I, I do spend quite a bit of time on, on large scale solar, but if there are questions about small scale rooftop, so we're happy to. To answer those as well, um, my background is actually in land use planning, um, so a lot of the information that I'll share with you tonight. Um, it's just some of the research and information that I, I, I've collected around its other ordinances and in different counties and how it works. Um, something that's really interesting to me and um, where I've done a lot about region and other counties on this topic as well. So I'll start just really high level of, you know, some of the, you know, key topics that really inform my work around the energy landscape here in Virginia. Um, and I'm sure you've probably heard some of this, but of course, there, there's been quite a bit of technology improvements, um, and. Significant declines in cost of renewable energy that, um, you know, we're seeing this across communities in Virginia where there's, um. Increased demand for developing renewable energy. There are both federal and state policies that are, they're influencing this as well to some extent. Um, but I, I think really the key point, um, is local community priorities and, and how do you, you know? Find where every community, um, you know, where is developing energy and, you know, this shift towards more renewable energy, how does it fit in every community? And there, there's a role for every single community in Virginia, um, have these conversations and, um, you know, hopefully in a really productive manner and. I've been a number, part of a number of these conversations across Virginia and, um, you know, hope to continue to do that tonight. This is just like kind of some background information again, that really informs a lot of my work, um. Just starting all the way on the left and going to the right, um, you know, in twenty ten, um, you know. That farthest left column that was nationwide, the installed capacity of energy you could had in this country. And that second one was what we had in the queue, what was being planned for development. So back in twenty ten, you know, we were starting to see a little bit of solar and wind, really not a whole lot, um. Shifting to twenty twenty two, we actually saw some of that solar and wind actually being built. Um, but I think what's really kind of informing where this, you know, transition is, is seeing what's being planned and in the queue right now for development. Is a total shift from what we saw twelve years ago, um. And just, and it's not just solar, we're seeing a lot of storage, wind, offshore wind, so. You know, there's a lot of requests for developing renewable energy across this country, um, and like I said, every community, um, it is, you know, having to think about how, how this fits. And, and just specific to solar, um, this graph on the right, um, comes from the U S Energy Information Administration. On a few different cases of, you know, what our energy future might look like, um. Whether there's a low uptake of renewable energy, high uptake of renewable energy. Um, and really in all those scenarios, you're really seeing a lot of solar deployment through twenty fifty. Um, certainly differences in, you know, how much natural gas we might see and, and coal and nuclear, but. Um, one of the things that I, I see in just kind of the, the bigger picture is like, we continue to see like solar is, is likely to be a bigger part of our. Um, energy portfolio nationally and, and in Virginia. So just shifting a little bit to, to Virginia, um, this is right now in terms of solar, large scale solar facilities that are currently deployed and, and active in Virginia. Um, and it continues to grow by the day, but, um. There's eighty seven solar facilities that are over five megawatts that are built, uh, across Virginia. Uh, large bit on, in Southside Virginia, but continuing to grow throughout Virginia, um. The total capacity of all those projects is roughly four thousand three hundred fifty megawatts. Of course, there are, you know, some projects that are, are, are large and, and quite a bit of, of smaller projects and we're, we're seeing more of these smaller projects being developed across the state. Um, a couple of things I just wanted to point out, I, um, you know, some of the bullet points in terms of things that you're interested in, I tried to touch on. Uh, and this is kind of an area where I think just some additional research on your own would be useful. In terms of, you know, what is the state doing to mitigate environmental impacts of solar facilities? Um, there's been quite a bit of work done, um. On improving statewide regulations for mitigating impacts of solar facilities, um. Uh, and I won't speak in too much detail since I don't work for the Department of Environmental Quality. Um, they've made significant changes to stormwater control. Um, for solar facilities and those have just recently been released and will go into effect July first. Um, there is a, a grandfather clause for some older projects that have already been approved for interconnection, but moving forward. Um, there's quite a bit more detail in terms of how solar facilities are retrieved from, from stormwater perspective. Um, and there are very specific sections in the stormwater management handbook pertaining to solar, um. And I'm, I'm not an expert, but I, I certainly encourage you all to, to, to read that. Um, and then the other is something that came out of, um, legislation two years ago. Um, to update the permit by rule regulations that DEQ also oversees, um, and that's for any renewable energy facility. Um, apart from those that go through the State Corporation Commission. Are subject to, um, additional mitigation or avoidance for any impacts to farmland and forests. Um, DEQ has just, um. Publicly released a draft regulations, um, that will go into effect at the, the end of this year. Um, they will be open to public comment probably the next couple of months. Um, there's been a lot of work, quite a few people in this room were on that work group to help develop these regulations. Um, so again, another, um, kind of. Some of the more detail, I encourage you to, to do some research and, and I mentioned all this just because, um. As much as, you know, local governments have been thinking about how to regulate these projects, there's been a lot of work done at, at the state level as well. Um, you know, there's been some, you know, negative impacts in, in different communities. Um, and so, you know, this is where, in, in my opinion, you know, statewide regulations are, are beginning to catch up with, with this technology. Um, and there's been a lot of work done to, to think about, you know, where, where there can be improvements, um, and certainly where. Um, localities don't have to feel like they're, they're burdened with having to regulate all these impacts, there's quite a bit as well that the state's taking on. So, um, I'll kind of spend the rest of my time just, um, sharing a little bit about, you know, what's going on across the state in terms of. Solar ordinances, it, it's, it's very common, um, there are some pretty significant differences, but. Um, just this is at a very high level, how many localities have at least defined large scale solar in their ordinance, um? Most counties have, including Flubana, um, haven't defined in their ordinance, um. There are a few that are catching up, um, next slide. This is kind of taking a step further, which is, I think, what you all are working on, um, in terms of. What local governments have actually gone a step further and defined specific standards, um, for large scale solar and their ordinance. Um, so there's a lot of examples to look at, um, and, and, and think about, you know, what, what's worked well in other counties, what, what happened. I often hear local planners, you know, they're, they're really good at copying one another, so. Um, that's always a good, good resource just to take a look at, you know, what other local governments have done and, and see, you know, how their projects have been developed. As far as, you know, the really common standards that you see in local ordinances and, and you've probably talked about some of these and, and this certainly isn't all encompassing. Um, but the ones that I, you know, see quite a bit is, you know, just some suggestions around project size, what zoning districts projects are allowed. Or setbacks, things around agriculture and forestry protection, wildlife corridors, stormwater. Um, you know, ground cover. Citing agreements, and I'm happy to take questions on that separately, um, there's usually kind of some mention about how citing agreements might work in a local government. Any visual impacts, um. Typically taxation, there is, um, sections about revenue share typically separate from zoning. Um, in a separate section of the ordinance around taxation and revenue sharing. Um, and a number of others, happy to, you know, take questions later on, if, if you have any about kind of specific. Um, but just a few of the kind of key, um, standards that I see a lot of debate on in, in local communities and I get a lot of questions. Um, I, I've spent quite a bit of time just researching what other ordinance have done and, you know, what are the kind of standard out there for, and this is just setbacks. Um, property line setbacks for, for solar specifically, um. Not every county that has standards for solar has defined setbacks, but, um, I'm not sure exactly how many are here, but. Just running the numbers, um, you know, there are a few outliers, but in general, the. The median is a hundred feet for property line setbacks and a little bit over that for the average, just because there are some outliers. Um, and in some cases, the counties do have very specific reasons for those larger setbacks, um. But that is kind of the typical standard, but, you know, it is a very common approach for, uh, mitigating against impacts. Um, both visually as well as, you know, stormwater runoff, that's a, a very common, um, kind of one of the first things a lot of communities think about is, you know, what's the appropriate setback?
Can I just, in reference, aren't there some? That go above five hundred in these parts of the county, like Lancaster, my understanding is they have certain areas of their county that are. Based upon the roadways and scenic pathways, thousands. Feet setbacks, do you?
Correct, so this is kind of like the base that I just gave you for here, um. And there, like a lot of counties will leave leeway or, you know, in the conditional use permanent process, so. I think even like Louisiana and I think that's Amelia that you see like three hundred and five hundred. I think in their instance, they, you know, provided for instances where they may want to reduce that for certain projects where, um. So typically, like a lot of counties use that conditional use permit to maybe either raise or lower that for that. This is just what I've been before, sort of the base setback. And kind of similar topic, a lot of counties have also defined a, a specific setback for residential property, um. Typically a little bit larger than just setback from the property line, the roads, um, the median is a hundred fifty feet compared to a hundred. Or just general setbacks, um, and there are some counties that have quite a bit larger and some that are smaller, um. So there's a lot of variation, I think, one of the things just from my perspective that, that's useful that. I like to encourage, just like some consistency across the state, um, in terms of setbacks, certainly not a requirement, um, but there is. Quite a bit of variation, especially in approaches with residential setbacks. And the last one I'll just touch on, um, as well as landscape buffers, um, and that kind of goes hand in hand with setbacks. Um, is often kind of the first approach that local governments do to, to mitigate some of the key impacts. Um, both visually as well as, you know, stormwater runoff is, um, mandating some type of landscape buffer. These are what their requirements are, are across the state in terms of the width of the landscape buffers. Again, a question I get a lot, um. One of the things that has also come up quite a bit, um, with landscape buffers is, um, in some cases where. The, you know, landscape plan is submitted and the county isn't happy with the actual plantings of the landscape buffer, um. A common approach that's been used in a lot of localities is requiring landscape surety bond. Um, just to ensure that, you know, the landscape plan is up to what they expected. Um, I think some of the earlier projects, um, some communities have been unhappy with the vegetated buffer that they thought they were getting. Um, so that's been a common approach to help mitigate some of those concerns, just require a landscape purity, um, I'll be going in that initial kind of approval process. And the last thing I think, um, you all were curious about was just transmission line proximity and, and what that means, um. So this is just a map of kind of transmission lines. Across the state, and I think it's really important to, uh, keep in mind, all transmission lines aren't the same. Um, there are some that are of much higher voltage than others and actually we'll see, you know, these high voltage ones actually somewhat follow our. Interstate system in the same way that we're, you know, moving our transportation up and down the I ninety five corridor around five forty four. Um, our electricity is moving across the state kind of in a similar direction, um, but what that means is generally. You only see larger solar projects connected to larger transmission lines. And you will typically see smaller projects connected to smaller transmission and, and distribution lines. Um, so that will kind of inform the type of projects that will locate, um, in different areas, like you wouldn't see a five megawatt project connecting to a five hundred K D line. Um, just the costs for interconnection there are too high, um, but it is informative, so I'll just start there and I've got a couple other slides to add to the detail. Um, so this is what's in Flubana County right now, um, and I mentioned this because. One of the things that comes up a lot in ordinances is, you know, can you mandate like that? So it should be within one mile of a transmission line or not. Um, so I just wanted to point out where the three projects that are currently in Flubana that have been approved, um, most. All of which are, are smaller projects that are distribution level projects, so they're not connected directly to the transmission, um. And in some cases, you, you have some projects that are at a mile or in excess of a mile from a transmission line. Um, and I think your ordinance currently defines a utility scale at three megawatts and larger, um, and I mentioned that because. You know, once you get up above twenty megawatts, you probably more likely see projects connected to transmission, but projects between that three megawatt, twenty megawatt. Some stations might be within one mile of transmission line, but, but not always the case because they're connected to the distribution system and not the, the transmission system. Yep, um, so just a good example of this, um, in Louisiana County and they don't have anything in their ordinance about. Like one mile from the transmission line, but. Where that might kind of cause some, you know, issues is like, you know, those blue are the footprint of their current solar projects, um. And, you know, you, I mapped out kind of a buffer around their transmission lines. And you'll see probably like half of the acreage of solar in Louisiana is outside of a mile from a transmission line. Um, some of those projects are either connected to a distribution line or the actual project footprint itself extends outside of the. Um, transmissions line kind of buffer area, so that's kind of in, kind of where it can be a little bit, kind of. Difficult to really define, you know, a specific buffer area around transmission line, just because it's kind of hard to really. Um, foresee kind of where projects are really going to be successful, especially if projects aren't connected to the transmission line. So this is just kind of an example I shared there.
And, 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 and our planning department provided a similar map of Flubana County with. Um, to the planning commission and the board, which shows a half mile, one mile, then one of the half miles of all the. Transmission and distribution line, similar to what I said.
And then, um, I think it's my last slide, like I said, my background's in planning, um, and I, I know one of the things that you are all are thinking about it in a special purpose district. For, um, solar, um, so it's not an approach that's been commonly used in Virginia, it hasn't. There are a couple of examples and I, I've seen it elsewhere around the country, um, and I think you highlighted that in previously. In Witty County is probably the, the only example I'm familiar with, it has a kind of specific city zoning district. Um, for solar, and in their case, it applies to any project larger than two acres. Um, and so like solar in that county require both a rezoning and a conditional use permit, um. Caroline County at one point did have a solar ordinance that had an overlay zoning district, they did repeal that. Um, but this is a map of what it did look like, um, and so they actually defined. Um, buffer areas around their transmission lines, larger buffers for larger transmission lines. And slightly smaller buffers for their smaller transmission lines, um. And went about kind of saying solar overlay zoning district, I think it's a, certainly an interesting approach, like I said. Um, it has been used in, in, in other places around the country, um, I think it has benefit certainly in, in being able to really kind of. Define some of the specific standards and conditions, I think one of the potential weaknesses is. That it can be difficult to, uh, from a county perspective, to really define the specific areas within the county that are most advantageous for solar. Um, that certainly can change and it, it's hard, um, from a land use perspective to kind of. Um, foresee, you know, interconnection costs or capacity on certain transmission lines, so. It can be difficult, especially given to the overlay zoning district, to really define areas where solar should be. Um, just because sometimes a siding source can be quite complicated. Uh, so I think with that, um, happy to take any questions now, um, and also happy to follow up after the other presenters.
Anybody?
We should, we should let the presenters do it and then we can do the questions from that standpoint. Thank you, that was great.
Uh, next we have Todd Flowers with Dominion Energy.
Good evening, thank you for. Having me visit beautiful Flubana County.
Amen.
Um, been with the company about twenty six years, my background is in nuclear engineering. I was just mentioning the oil is the, the last class of nuclear engineers in U D A, where they shut the program down. But I've been involved in the solar space, in the solar space for more than a decade, um, really when the company first started. Looking at solar back in two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. I was part of the team that was acquiring projects out in California and Utah. We started developing projects in North Carolina and we kind of brought this expertise into Virginia. Um, I think it's important to note that our primary mission is to deliver to our customers. Reliable, affordable and increasingly clean energy, and this solar discussion is critical to that mission. Of all the utilities in the United States, we own and operate the second largest solar fleet. Um, that's out there, so we have a great deal of experience, not only in developing. But in constructing and operating solar facilities, and that's broader than just in Virginia. Uh, parts of our company do span in South Carolina and North Carolina. Well, we've developed projects all across the country, I think it's important to note that we've done this in many different regions. And our, our largest concentration is here in the Commonwealth of Virginia. When we move to the next slide. This is kind of a snapshot of our portfolio today. Um, we do have over one point five gigawatts of solar in operation in the Commonwealth. Not that different than the map that, that Aaron just showed you of facilities in the state. To put things in perspective, one point five gigawatts is one thousand five hundred megawatts. And a single megawatt is enough energy to energize on average about two hundred and fifty homes. So today our solar fleet is sufficient to energize more than three hundred and eighty thousand homes at peak output. So it's really making a dent and the energy needs the Commonwealth. This map also includes projects that are in development or under construction, that includes over seven gigawatts. Worth of projects. A little bit on solar construction and before you even start construction, there are typically. Several years of, of planning and development in the process. It could be three to five years before we even put a shovel in the ground. The way that we go about our solar development, first you identify landowners that are receptive to hosting a project. For utility scale projects, you typically need multiple landowners, so it does take some time. To get those land use agreements in place and we are receptive to, to leasing property from landowners, some, some families want to keep the. Land and their, their family, they enjoy the annual revenue that a project would, would provide, uh, the family. Others like to sell the property and get that one time kind of lump sum and we're receptive to vote. So we'll spend time putting together a, a, a portion of parcels that are in ideally. Uh, so close to a transmission line that it traverses the property. We don't like to slide our projects that are great distances from our transmission or distribution system. It adds costs and it, it certainly adds, um, additional considerations in the development process. Once we have vetted a good number of parcels, there's a, a bunch of criteria we look at, the topography, certainly the wetlands. We do a great deal of diligence. When we find that a project is feasible and has good connection to the transmission system, we'll submit a. An application to PJM and PJM is the kind of third party organization that operates the transmission system. That we participate in. We'll submit an application to PJM for a interconnection. That process takes multiple years, if you were to submit a transmission connected project today to the PJM process. You likely would not get an interconnection agreement until twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight. Now, they are undergoing a pretty significant reform process so that they can study these projects more quickly. Once that project, once that transition process is fully implemented, it will likely take two years for PJM to go through. And study that interconnection and give you an interconnection agreement, we're not there yet, but we're working toward that. So the second step for us would be just submitting an application to PJM to get that interconnection study process kind of in place. We work at the, the locality pretty early on, uh, we'll set up meetings with the county administrator. Um, understand their, any, you know, concerns, their perspectives, we'll meet with community members. We'll meet, if it's a, a project that's within the Chesapeake Bay watershed, we'll meet with organizations like the Chesapeake Bay Foundation, the Native Plant Society. So we want to ensure that all stakeholders have a voice in the process. And if there's a particular aspect of the project that they have a concern or recommendation. We consider that and we, we include that in our development process. I was just mentioning, we have a project in Lancaster County. That we've been working on for three or four years and it's just now getting to the point where we're going to present that to the planning commission, but we've met with. The Native Plant Society a dozen times to ensure that, um, their, their concerns are heard. And we've gotten to a point where they are strong supporters of the project. So we think it's really important to get that community engagement with all stakeholders. That can take time as well, once we have kind of a consensus from that feedback from, uh, the community, feedback from the locality. We'll go through the local permitting process, so the planning commission meeting, uh, followed by the board of supervisors, which y'all are all familiar with. Once we have a conditional use permit that's been approved and we have a citing agreement that's been negotiated. Will then consider that project into our regulatory filing. We'll file that with the State Corporation Commission. They have a six month review period to review that project because we are asking for cost recovery from our customers. They ultimately have a say in whether or not that project gets approved and gets a, what we call a certificate of public convenience and necessity or a CPCN. Once we have that CPCN in hand, we'll then start construction, but by then it's typically been. Three to four to five years since we started developing the project. The construction can take twelve, twenty four months. Once the project's fully constructed, we'll turn it over to our operations team. They'll be responsible for maintaining the project for what's typical a thirty five year, um, asset. Following the thirty five years, we have options to either re-energize, which we then would come back to locality, we'd need a, a new conditional use permit. Or we would take the land back to its previous condition. So we, we do have options at the end of that thirty five year term to either turn it back to agricultural use. Or to repower, if that's in the interest of both the landowner and the company and the locality. So I think that kind of touches on the, the, the five steps, uh, I mentioned here, I didn't. Go into detail on the construction, a certain sequencing of post installation to electrically connecting, we can certainly dive into those. Details as well if that's helpful. A couple of solar best practices, um, and one of the primary considerations is stormwater control. There've been a lot of lessons learned in the Commonwealth in regard to stormwater control, initially we were designing basins. You know, you have a basin for about every hundred acres of land and that's what the DEQ requirement is, well, we learned that that may not be sufficient. In recent years, we've had records, you know, rainfall and a couple of years in a row, we kept breaking that record, so. Um, we've learned that, you know, doing a single basin for every hundred acres is not sufficient, so we go well above and beyond. That DEQ requirement and our, our typical standard is having a stormwater basin for every twenty five acres. Uh, and that ensures you have better control of stormwater, especially during these really high rain events and it feels like every year we. Set a new record on a, a rainfall event. We also have really modified other controls such as the, the silk fences. They're now a, a double row metal backed silk fence. That's just to ensure you don't have any releases during these stormwater events. We work really closely with DEQ, now Aaron kind of alluded to some new regulations that are going into effect, we are already planning for those. Um, there are new requirements, what we call a sheet flow, where you may have rainfall go from one parcel to a next. We are implementing and ensuring that we'll meet all those new DEQ requirements.
When you say we, do you, I understand you're with Dominion, but we haven't had any. Body, I mean, we're, we're dealing with other companies that are proposing projects out here, so. Do we know that they're not necessarily racing to the bottom on these types of requirements or?
Yeah, and you, we, we can't control what third parties do, um, that's where I think it's important when a third party, whether it be Dominion Energy. Or a third party, if they bring a, a project to you for your consideration. That either in your ordinance or in your review of the conditional use permit application, that you ensure that they are. Putting those best practices into their project and you can require that as part of your cup conditions.
You've mentioned DEQ several times and water quality, what's the process of? Before or during construction or considering? Before or during construction or considering impacts to cultural resources such as. In-ground resources through archaeology.
Yeah, absolutely.
Standing resources through visual effects.
Yeah, abso- absolutely, and in Virginia, we have a lot of both of those.
We certainly do.
So, early on in the process, there'll be a, a cultural resource study that gets performed. Um, and it will go to different levels and there's different. Varies of how in-depth those studies go. I mean, there could be, if you're in an area where they find artifacts, you may need to do. Um, shovel tests where you, you know, you, you do samplings to make sure that you don't find. Artifacts of pottery or, you know, if there is an indigenous. Um, artifacts that are found that you, you may need to take that, that cultural resource study to the next level. Uh, but we'll do an environmental site assessment, which includes a, both a cultural, historical, architectural review. Identify those resources and then we avoid any impact to resources that are identified. And it's not uncommon to identify a resource like a graveyard. Um, because they're not all well-marked. And if we, we do identify something like a graveyard, we'll take steps to avoid disturbance. And ensure that it won't impact access to that graveyard or impact um. You know, that cultural resource being there.
Thank you.
And we do the same, not only with cultural, historical and architectural, but. Other environmental considerations like threatening endangered species. Uh, there are certain considerations like the longer bat. Um, so we have avoid impacts to those habitats of those species. I, um. On the next slide, a couple other considerations that, that we take into account. In Virginia, we have a lot of, we'd call these wetlands fingers. Um, all across the state, very different than developing in like Utah or California. We avoid disturbing those wetlands fingers. We create what's called wildlife quarters. So if you are developing a project, we ensure that wildlife can continue to traverse that property. Through their natural habitat. Those wetlands fingers often provide an ideal. Location for wildlife to traverse, that's where they're habitating. So we'll ensure that they have corridors in place to continue to traverse the property for. Projects that are of significant acreage. We're also um, deploying things like pollinator gardens, uh, which do provide a, a contribution to the agricultural industry. Regarding buffers, I know Aaron spent a, a little bit of time talking about buffers. I'm not a big fan of the, the landscaped buffer. Where you, you drive by a, a rural part of Virginia and you'll see every six feet, a, a four foot Leland Cypress is planted. To me, that looks very manufactured. There's a much better way to go about developing these buffers. Um, I've had a lot of discussion with uh, friends in Lancaster County about naturalized buffers. You know, there's a several year process, as I mentioned, between identifying a project, going through development and constructing. So in that five-year period, you can create a naturalized buffer. If you let nature take its course and you introduce native species. You can have what's in this picture here, a naturalized buffer. It looks like any other road would look if you let nature take its course. You do need to be cautious that you don't introduce invasive species. But in my opinion, a, a naturalized buffer, to me, is more aesthetically pleasing than in your. Ordinance or in your conditional use permit, you dictate. A certain species of plant like a Leland Cypress, a certain height and a certain cadence of when they'll be planted. Uh, to me, you don't get that visual buffer that you would do a, a naturalized buffer. When projects were first being developed in the Commonwealth, landowners would clear the property all the way to the property line, then they would build a project. We don't do that anymore. Um, if there's existing trees and vegetation, we keep that existing trees and vegetation on the, the perimeters of the project. Because they make great buffers and they're healthy. Um, so we, we are really cautious when we go about our timbering practices to ensure that we maintain. Existing buffers so that the community won't even know the project's there once it's installed because that buffer. Has always been there and still there once the project's constructed.
So let's say it was pine land. Well, if you kept pines for a hundred, two hundred feet or whatever. Being pines, it's not going to create a vegetative buffer visually. You're going to see through that and you can't plant really, I would assume, much on the ground that's gonna. Grow to the height you would, that, that would block it because the mature pines are gonna. Drown it out, correct?
Yeah, it, it depends, because some vegetation will grow adjacent to like a loblawy pond. It, it. In a lot of ways, it's going to be site-specific and it depends on what that vegetation is. You will need to be somewhat cautious if there are really tall pines, or you know, if there's a. A shading analysis that needs to be performed to ensure that you. You aren't impacting the efficiency of the project through really tall loblawy ponds, if it's going to shade the project. Um, but we'll take that into con- into consideration. But yeah, sometimes depending on what's there, you don't get a lot of undergrowth and you can see through. A lot of times, if you let mother nature take its course. A, you know, vegetation will grow, um, even where there's a good concentration of pine. It just, it, it does vary across the state, though.
So what's your average buffer size?
It varies, I'd say it depends on whether or not you're buffering between a, just an adjacent parcel. Or you're buffering between a public roadway. So five hundred feet.
Parcel, a home or a subdivision?
Yeah, it commented you'd be five hundred feet away from a, another home.
Waterways.
Waterways.
From the home.
From the home of, well.
Uh, not from the property line from, from the home, it'll be a, yeah, shorter from the property line, but we'll. If there are certain considerations, waterways would be one. So if you're within the, the Chesapeake Bay watershed. Will certainly want to have a, a greater. Distance between any tidal waters, because we don't want to impact that watershed.
Right.
So the project that we had in Lancaster County, the Cortoman is not too far away, so we have a, an increased buffer. To that watershed because we don't want to impact. You know, any potential for water runoff or any impact on the ecosystem. That utilizes that, that area adjacent to the Cortoman.
Okay, thank you.
Or if there's like a, a historic structure, you, you need a certain setback or certain. Um. Certain instances where you may deviate from a locality standard setback. It's really important, I think a lot of this is project specific and not all one. You know, piece of an ordinance is necessarily the, the right way to go about every project. That's why I think it's important that. Projects be considered on a case-by-case basis. Um, some projects are better buffer than others that may not need a, a larger setback depending on. What parcels are around it. Uh, another consideration. Yeah, you're, you're good, correct. Another consideration and a focus for our efforts is developing what's called a previously used site. Um, sometimes referred to as brownfield sites. So a great deal of focus on putting solar on closed landfills. In fact, we have one that has been very successful. We're about to start construction later this year. We're very proud of it. It's the Ivy landfill solar in Ivy, Virginia, just outside of Charlottesville. Um, we have a, a project that's going to connect to the distribution system. This is property that would otherwise have no other use. So we're able to place solar on top of the cap of the landfill and generate electricity by, by having a dual use for that property. We're trying to do more of this across the Commonwealth, so. Um, if you have any landfills within your jurisdiction that are closed or will be closed in the next decade, we'd certainly love to work with you on. Using that property for another purpose once this landfill uses complete.
What about your old Dominion sites?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna bring that question up, um. Yeah, we have one here in Flavanna County where Dominion has picked up and left and there is a. Well, they're having a coal ash problem down there now, so it's unusable land. Have you guys considered using that for a solar facility?
I don't know that we have, um. I'm not real familiar with that, that facility, but I, I can certainly, most of the. Assets that have been decommissioned, we have evaluated for some type of repurposing. Whether could it be, could we use that interconnection for like energy storage? Or, or solar. But I, I don't know off the top of my head, you know, what the results of that review of that facility were.
Well, it's also not completed too, because you're having to shift all the coal ash problems. Previously outlined and outlined, it's Remo Bluff.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Well, I, I see you mentioning other places other than.
Yeah.
Old Dominion sites, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, most of our coal ash, um, projects are. Are still several years in the process of getting those dispositioned.
But you all would consider using those.
Oh, absolutely.
If it was possible.
Absolutely. There are additional tax credits you get when you put solar in a formal use site. Those tax credits, the way that that calculation works for us, the benefit of those tax credits is essentially feedback to our customers. It reduces what we call the revenue requirement. So it reduces the amount of money that we recover from our customers to build that facility. So we pursue those types of tax credits, it's one of the reasons why we're interested in. Putting projects on brownfield sites because those federal tax credits are, are useful and we're, you know, and reducing the cost of the project.
Could you also put um, your solar, uh, solar facilities on your closed coal ash landfills?
We've not looked at coal ash specifically because those projects are still in process, um. I don't know what would preclude it as long as the cap that's used on top of the coal ash can support. The weight of a solar facility. But the, most of the coal ash projects are still.
Yeah.
Kind of in process. Um, we've probably looked at. Two dozen landfills across the Commonwealth and are moving forward with about a half a dozen of those today.
Thank you.
And then some of the, the economic benefits, um, Aaron also alluded to this, certainly increased tax revenue. You have two options when it comes to taxing these facilities. You can get revenue through the traditional machinery and tools tax. Or you can adopt revenue share. The University of Virginia in conjunction with Virginia Energy and other stakeholders. Created a platform called SOL Tax, S O L Tax. And if you're not familiar with it, it's a really useful platform. That allows you to do some modeling of some scenarios based on how many facilities you may anticipate in the county. And you can model out the, the various revenues you get under those two structures. A lot of localities prefer the revenue share. Um, because the revenue they get is known and for budgeting purposes. You can rely upon that revenue share dollar amount. Versus your traditional M and T tax, there's two things to consider and I'm not, not trying to give you tax advice, I'm just telling you.
The county did, the county does, uh, to adopt the revenue share.
Oh, great, okay. And then it doesn't impact your composite index, which is another consideration, so. I think most localities are moving toward the, the revenue share adoption. Siting agreements. Uh, we just had a siting agreement approved Tuesday night in Greensville County for one of our projects. It's another way that we can work with you in getting funding for whatever capital project you deem beneficial. To your jurisdiction and to your citizens, so that, those dollars can go towards schools, road improvements, an earmark project. Um, but we are interested in negotiating um, siting agreements that are mutually beneficial. And then there are the broader economic benefits through the job creation and the use of goods and services in locality. There's an organization called South Central Virginia Business Alliance that has gotten a lot of businesses together that are in the. The trade fields in construction and, and gravel. And have created this organization that you can participate in to get access to engineering procurement, construction firms, so that. When those firms are constructing a project, they know which businesses to reach out to. There's nothing precluding that type of. Association to be deployed in Atlanta and the surrounding counties.
And your experience with siding agreements, has there been any way, and have any of the localities, and. Not sure the legality, I think we've discussed the legality of this before. So probably one of three of you down there at the table can answer this. Has there been any method to ensure that. The, the, the money that's negotiated during the siding agreements stays within the community that maybe is shouldering the burden of that project? Because I, I think there might be some concern that when you do a siding agreement and. You know, you have a community that's sharing, shouldering the burden of that project and then that, that. That, I guess, the, the benefits of the siding agreement aren't distributed equitably. You know, as far as who's shouldering it, I, I just didn't know if you had any experience with that.
Yeah, the, it, it's legally, it, it's up to the locality to decide on how you want to disperse those funds. So it would be up to your board to put those conditions or protections in place to. To disperse those funds to the communities that are hosting the project.
Yeah, as an example for the Ford, you know, you know, Fork Union area, I mean, if, if the board says we want the funds from a siding agreement to go to X. Let's just say it's, um, I don't know, uh, a, a park or something like that in Fork Union or something. Well, you would specifically put that in the siding agreement. Um, to, to really earmark what those funds are for, or you could put it as, as general from a board standpoint as they want. I mean, that's, it's really based upon how the board, um, you know, kind of. Kind of creates the signing agreement and, and how they want those funds to be allocated.
Yeah, a couple of years ago, they really broadened what's hanging against the bus to be used for. So as long as related capital improvements, it doesn't have to be specifically related to the solar project like it was previously.
But it could if the board wants to be specific to that particular area that, that is potentially being impacted.
So I think we did with the Dominion money. Uh, didn't we regard a pipeline for Fork Union?
Correct.
Hmm.
Yep.
Also a park.
Yep.
We have park upgrades to the community center in Fork Canyon. I mean, you could have that in their siding agreement, the money's going to go toward this.
That is.
I've had a lot of localities that have indicated they'd like to use the funding for parks. Um, there's a tri-town bike path in Lancaster that they're looking for funding for the people, so it'd be great to do that. The revenue share, um. Funding, a lot of localities have used that in lieu of having to increase property taxes. Which is a lot of times a, has been a touchy subject in some localities because people seeing continual increases in property taxes. On the last slide, I just want to touch on, and, and to sort of, that you were aware that there is a lot of misinformation uh, that is out there. That I encourage you to look at reputable studies that have been performed. Um, by places like NC State has done a, a lot of studies on. The impacts of soil, um, from solar modules. Those studies have shown that solar models do not have any impact on soil quality. Uh, property value is another one, a lot of studies have been done on. Impacts to property value within a, an adjacent property or surrounding properties to a project. Agricultural land, um. Most studies I have seen show that if you, you take a agricultural piece of land. Out of agricultural use for thirty-five years, then when you introduce that piece of property back to agricultural use. It's actually in a better condition because the soil has an opportunity to kind of rejuvenate. The introduction of sheep as a form of landscape control. Adds additional value to the soil and to the land because they introduce nutrients, um, to the soil. Just through their, their grazing of the, of the, the grass that's on the property. Uh, we're continuing to use more and more sheep for landscape maintenance. Um, it's a, it's a win-win for us. It's great for the farmer that are looking for more property to grow their blocks. Uh, it's good to have a dual use of that property and most communities. Enjoy seeing property being used for more than one purpose, so you can continue to keep it in an agricultural use. But also harvesting the sunlight for energy. Recycling of panels is also a, a topic that is often discussed. There are. Ways to go through recycling today. We're pretty early on in our solar journey, these are thirty-five year assets, so we're not decommissioning facilities today. But we did to a point where we are decommissioning facilities, there will be a market to recycle and you'll see those businesses come to Virginia. There are no recycling. Um, businesses today because there's no feedstock to recycle. So it doesn't make sense to set up a recycling operation and you don't have any throughput today, but it'll certainly be. A business case for recycling in the Commonwealth at the appropriate time.
With those multiple studies you're looking at, um, impacts on residential properties, um. Are those studies break, broken down by rural counties versus larger cities, larger areas?
They're, they're mostly rural counties, because that's where you've seen the penetration of solar.
Right, that's one that gets me because. Just common sense rationing. just common sense rationing says if you have a a farm field beside your house, or if you have two hundred acres of glass and steel, if you want to sell that house, it it just doesn't, it's not reasonable to me that in Savannah County, that one sells the same as the other.
Right. So the, and some of the considerations that that may not be as intuitive. One, you, if the project is well developed and it's, you don't look and see a bunch of steel and glass. But what you do know is that for thirty five years, there's not going to be another use on that property. That's going to bring additional disturbances, other types of development that would be more impactful. So for thirty five years, you're going to have a quiet neighbor that doesn't produce any noise, doesn't require the use for new sewer or water or schools. So it in some ways, it is advantageous because you know that for thirty five years will be no other impacts to that that property that's hosting the solar. You just got to ensure that it's appropriately buffered and well-developed.
Right, and if it's a single neighbor, but if it's multiple neighbors, it might be a difference. So um, I guess that's what I'm seeing. If you've got a solar um farm in a residential area that has ten or fifteen homes um. I think, I personally thinks it drops down the market value of that home because people don't want to live beside the solar farms. That's why I was asking if there was any recent study, not just a single home, but multiple homes around.
Yeah, I think a lot of the studies that that have been done, it's not, they weren't done for like the property of a single home, but it was for projects adjacent to communities.
Communities, yeah.
I want to come back to, you said appropriately buffered. It comes back, I think, your question to visual impacts. And what I think I hear you saying is contrary to what a lot of I think a lot of localities are doing are having hard and fast rules about so many feet and so much height and yet common sense seems to indicate that you need some wiggle room to address effects, not just kind of randomly decide on feet.
Yes, that is what I'm saying.
So, but that becomes really complex in terms of the kind of people who need to be at the table to design a mitigation um scheme that addresses the topography of the land, of the nature of the site you're trying to protect. And yet we're kind of using crude tools like number of feet.
Yeah, and and like the the slope of the land is is important. So if you're on a, if you have a home that looks down, then maybe that needs a different setback or a different criteria than a home where if you're looking up, you wouldn't see it. So it I think at the end of the day, a lot of it is very project-specific.
But if it's a locality, build those concepts that are complex into, and maybe this is a question for Mr. Barry Hill in terms of examples of localities that have given themselves the ability to address actual effects instead of just tossing numbers out there and that everybody lives up to.
Yeah, could you deal with that with the the siding agreement? If you built your buffering into the siding agreement process, you can deal with it specifically.
Yeah, typically in the conditional use permit, you'll have conditions in.
Right. But it's, it comes down to our perhaps having the courage to look at actual effects rather than relying on simple numbers to to drive this.
You know, a lot of localities will set kind of a minimum set of requirements and then it's up to locality to within the conditional use permitting process to add additional requirements based on the site-specific considerations.
Or reduce them.
Or reduce them. That's right.
Yeah, it it just seems like one one of the things, one of the common themes is as you go forward, there's having that ability to do those conditional things, but by by special use permit.
Yeah, you have to maintain the special use permission.
Yeah.
Right.
And that's, that's really critical.
But I think you will also have to have staff that can make judgments about visual impacts and nature of the resource. And that comes down to landscape analysis and visual analysis.
In sight physics.
Yeah.
I think there's been some localities that hired thirty third-party consultants or bigger projects like eighty hundred megawatts. And then that's charged to the developer for the project. This is
Right.
We have, you know, three people in the planning department. So for a big, big project, you'd have a third party looking at it and looking at all the facts.
I I think, I completely see what you say about about getting strapped to numbers. Well, to me, you have to have some criteria that, you know, some standards. Otherwise, it's somewhat up to the particular board that's elected at the time, the staff that happens to work there at the time. So what was approved this year might be different than in five years from now. And so it would concern me that there's not, I hear what you're saying. You you want flexibility. You also want to be able to say, dear citizens, we've kind of said, here's our standards.
Yeah.
Minimum set of guidelines.
Yeah, I like the idea of a minimum. But I also think it's really important to be looking at real impacts that are not so much subject to political shifts as the appropriate analysis by landscape people. Uh, people, I mean, there is a whole field associated with this. And if you tie it to actual effects that are site-specific, it does mean having the right kind of people at the table to help devise an an appropriate plan for a site.
Alex Rinden is here with me as well. He's the Ex-Home Affairs Manager for Green County. So I'll make sure that that you all know who Alex is. I'm certainly available at any time if you have any questions, but really appreciate you giving me the opportunity to give feedback. And we love it. A lot of localities reach out to us and get get our feedback when it comes time to putting into paper on setting up those and we'd be happy to give you our perspective on what an ideal kind of ordinance or what ideal conditions look like.
So one, one thing that has been brought up is basically the idea that somehow or another, due to, you know, regulations, federal and state, that this technology is being forced upon you guys if you don't want it. Is that true?
No, it's not true. And so and I cover all power generation technologies. So working on our small modular reactor program because we know we need a round-the-clock energy, even when the sun's not shining, that's carbon-free. I work on energy storage, working on deploying some combustion turbines. Solar and offshore wind, they are a big piece of our portfolio. Um, it it's one way to help mitigate variances in our fuel cost. So we we, you know, we do not pass through fuel charges because there's no cost of fuel. It does have a low levelized cost of energy. Um, but it's only available when the sun's shining. So I mean, solar is certainly a carbon-free complement to other power generation resources. And it, today, if you look at the cost of building solar on a dollars per megawatt hour basis, it's inexpensive. The challenge is that megawatt hour that's produced, we can't select when we want that megawatt hour. It's produced when the sun is shining. So it takes a portfolio approach. And we spend a great deal of time managing the types of resources we need to deploy to ensure that we have sufficient energy to meet up our customer load demands. Now, if you all remember, December twenty-third of twenty twenty-two, there are a couple of days in a row that the temperature was below freezing. We were critically close to not having sufficient energy resources to meet our customer load. Our utility to the south, energy, they had rolling blackouts. TBA had rolling blackouts. PJM had went into an emergency scenario because they were worried about the transmission grid not being able to provide energy to balance the grid. So we continue to use more and more energy. So we need an all-of-the-above approach so that we can continue to have reliable energy and then turn lights on and it's available. It takes solar, but it takes other types of generation as well.
What percent of your projects in Virginia, do you set up, you know, start to finish? And what percent do you purchase from someone who did that process start to finish?
It changes um year over year. The the DCA requires sixty-five percent of the projects be company-owned. And then thirty-five percent, we essentially get the energy through what's called a power purchase agreement. Of the sixty-five percent that are company-owned, right now about half of them are developed by the company and half of them we acquire through third-party developers that participate in an annual RFP. So we do, but we buy projects from developers and then we also self-build. And I'll tell you, not every solar developer is equivalent to the next one. I mean, there are good solar developers and there are some that are that are not so good. Um, it it's like any industry where there's there's some that are fly by night and sell the project once they're they're done. And then there's some that that aren't that way. Um, so I just encourage you to do your due diligence on any entity that comes and interviews a project in your community. For us, we've been in the energy business for over a century and we don't plan on going anywhere anytime soon. Uh, we are a community member. We have over two dozen employees that live in Flavana. Um, we have a couple thousand customers in Flavana. So we, we want to be a a community member that is a partner of yours. And we're here for the long term, but I encourage you to do your due diligence on any entity that comes in to contemplate putting a thirty-five-year asset in your community.
One last question, at least for me, um, we don't gather other speakers, but as far as um uh another concern that's been raised is storage. In other words, batteries that you use to equalize and maintaining, you know, store the energy if you would. Uh, so a lot of folks are concerned that those are prone to exploding or having problems like that.
Um, yeah, there there had been fires that have taken place at these energy storage facilities. Dominion Energy is essentially setting the standard on road spacing for energy storage facilities. It is critically important to us. We know if there's a single energy storage fire anywhere in the Commonwealth, that's going to damage every project going forward. So we we've set up really probably the strictest in the industry, the strictest fire suppression spacing requirements for energy storage of if anyone else deploying energy storage in the States.
Is there a statewide regulation that you're exceeding with regard to that or not?
There is no statewide regulation. Um, we've been told by energy storage companies that our specification is setting the industry standard. And we get complaints from energy storage companies like, wait, this is crazy. Your spacing's way, way too much. No one else is doing this. And we're making it our our specification. It's more expensive, but we think that it's the right thing to do. We're exploring other other chemistries, so we're not leaning on just lithium ion. We think that ultimately there's got to be a different chemistry. So we do have a pilot project at our Dartford County facility. We're looking at a zinc hybrid uh energy storage. We're looking at a, an iron-air energy storage essentially rusted reverse. And that iron-air battery can discharge for multiple days. So it has some advantages over lithium. Which lithium is a a precious resource that is heavily mined, that is used for EVs and we're having to compete the same lithium that all the EV manufacturers are using. The price has been very volatile. We we want to find a a better chemistry.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
So next we got John Ignash with Virginia Park of Extension. Very, thank you very much. I'm John Ignash. I'm the Extension Specialist with Virginia Tech Extension. Appreciate the invitation. I uh, I'm going to talk about soils. Uh, and as they relate to soil, right? So, one of the things I was asked to do uh was to talk about soils and highlight a new uh white paper publication led by Dr. Lee Daniels, who's a soil scientist. I'm not a soil scientist. Unfortunately, couldn't be here tonight. Um, but this white paper is screenshot here, soil site management protocols, best management practices uh for utility scale solar USS, often referred to as USS uh utility scale solar development and management in Virginia. Now, this is a recently uh published uh white paper uh led by Dr. Lee Daniels uh and about uh about seven collaborators at Virginia Tech. And it's a pretty dense document. As you can imagine, protocols and practices, it's about fifty pages. And I'm not going to do it justice tonight, but I am going to share where the link is and highlight a few things that are in there. Uh, so you're able to go back into it. You ask me any questions that you you're interested in tonight. But more than anything, I want to raise awareness about this this white paper resource. Um, Dr. Daniels has, I think, I don't want to age him too much, but I think about thirty-some years in uh land re-rehabilitation projects from mine lands to sand mines to now more recently working in utility scale solar, maybe over the past five, eight years, if I have that right. Maybe five, six years, actually. So this white paper is developed with leadership of Dr. Daniels, uh Dr. Stewart, about seven of us in total, uh contributing different parts uh of this roughly fifty-page document. It also has about fifty citations, I think. Uh, so it's linked to a lot of underlying uh research. Um, sometimes drawing from experiences that aren't from utility scale solar, uh because utility scale solar is still fairly new. Uh, so based on experiences from other site disturbances uh that might inform some solar best major practices for solar development. We'll go into that here in a little bit. Thank you. So really, it kind of goes into six areas, alright? Protocols and practice recommendations for minimizing soil disturbance, uh remediating the soil disturbances that occur, establishing vegetation, and then enhancing soil quality over time from the uh project development phase through the actual project, say thirty-five-year period. So in the project, uh the soils have been improved relative to the post-disturbance state by following best practices. And then also strategies for developing better estimations for uh post-project remediation requirements. We don't have a crystal ball. These are fairly new projects, but what might be some strategies to enhance opportunities for successful remediation outcomes, whatever they might be? And then also the better estimate stormwater. Again, I'm not going to go into all these in tremendous detail, but want to kind of highlight what's in this uh this white paper. Uh, and so you're aware of it and then follow up with any questions you might have that I can answer. The ones I can't answer, I'm happy to follow up later on. The real soil scientists. A lot of this was already covered. Utility skill solar is a big thing happening across US and and certainly in Virginia. The context for why developing this white paper. Uh, prediction management and rehab of these sites is critical for minimizing sediment losses, uh managing and reducing stormwater impacts. Return of these lands to productive uses, again, whatever they might be. Tech's working on a variety of different aspects related to uh these land conversions with utility scale solar and other aspects of it from planning, permitting, installation, stabilization during the active management phase. Uh, and then long-term closure of facilities related to the soil and water aspects. And Virginia Tech's doing that in partnership with industry collaborators, agencies, uh other universities, Virginia State University. Next slide. So I think some of this is already covered. Some will be labor uh some of this, but this gives a little more context of the white paper. White paper uh presents an overview of the challenges that utility scale solar develop during the active management closure uh potentially posed to soil and water quality over varying time scales from that development phase through the thirty-five some-year project period, along with recommended best practices at each of those phases. Bottom line, minimizing overall soil disturbances, particularly via limiting net cut and fill uh in grading operations is a paramount importance. Uh, limiting and remediating soil compaction during all phases of the site development is critically important as well. And we'll get into some examples of that. Uh, prompt compliance with existing DEQ and local erosion control guidelines, appropriate active site vegetation management practices and final remediation upon decommissioning uh can largely offset much of the initial site disturbance impacts, right? So again, kind of emphasizing the scope of the lead author, Dr. Daniels' kind of career working on this uh disturbed sites and doing remediation studies. Uh, it's it's based on research outreach experience with land disturbing activities, you know, from other sections, other applications. Not necessarily all utility scale so- solar, just because utility scale solar is so new. So from mining, road construction, urbanization, wetland restoration and recreation. Uh practices recommended are evolving and are based on the assessment of civil plans, geotech reports and actual site conditions. For roughly thirty-five closed or implemented utility skill solar sites in Virginia since twenty-twenty, so four years. Uh these are opinions and positions that are expressed or intended to be supplementary. To existing and developing Virginia D E Q uh regs, uh some of these are in the works to take effect July one. Uh and are complimentary with the existing stormwater management erosion sediment control best management practices also. Uh again, we're working with a range of scientists at Virginia Tech and other institutions and agencies uh to monitor and describe the actual effects of large-scale solar development. On runoff, water quality, soil conditions across a variety of sites in Virginia. Uh from the physiographic regions but also uh development phase. Uh so these summary recommendations in this white paper will be reviewed and updated periodically as better information becomes available. And this latest releases kind of fresh off the press of May twelfth, it's been made a couple weeks ago. Alright, so we'll kind of get into it a little bit with some of these different sections here, we'll start with um the protocol and practice recommendations. And that was on the previous slide on the right, at the end of this fifty-page document is kind of a a bullet list of of some of these uh the the specifics of these practices. They kind of summarize it, but a real quick soils one-on-one, you know, soils isn't just dirt, right? There's mineral matter, uh organic matter, and about half of its open pore space between water and air. And that's a profile volume composition of a desirable surface soil. And then we can see these soil horizons, right, where we have what we call topsoil and then subsols, all these have different properties. Right, especially with respect to potential plant growth. So back to point one, minimizing soil disturbances, you know, within the white paper, there's some legal definitions of land disturbing activity, but in the white paper. A soil disturbance is any activity that leads to significant alteration of the original soil profile that directly limits plant growth. Or increases surface runoff and potential for sediment losses, yeah? So some examples of these activities, potential soil disturbing activities related to utility skill solar. Removal storage and reapplication of topsoil, grading, trenching, stormwater conveyances, detention ponds and outlets. Uh concentrated traffic, stump boom, uh and some others. Minimal surface grading that disturbs less than six inches of the profile. Uh does not expose or highly compact the underlying subsol, not the topsoil but the subsol. Uh and is stabilized immediately, seven to fourteen days. In this context, the white paper is not necessarily defined as being significant, so just because you're doing something doesn't necessarily mean it has a a significant impact. Depending on how it's managed, as we talked about, things are site-specific, practice-specific, the final touch and execution is important in these things. Complete removal, storage and return of topsoil over an altered subsol is however considered significant disturbance. Uh extensive exposure bare subsol materials for extended periods of time is also considered significant. So what what's why is this a big deal, alright? So impacts from the soil disturbance, a potential erosion impacts the plant growth and impacts to increase uh potential for runoff. Again, back if we look at that volumetric profile distribution of, you know, an ideal soil, about half of it is air and water, right? So soil compaction, I'm starting with the middle point, soil compaction due to solid particles filling those soil pores where that air and water otherwise would have been. Uh really can impede root development. You know, this is hard for me to understand sometimes or or to believe because you walk down sidewalks and you see a tree root that's just pouring up the entire sidewalk. Right, but the deal is that exploring root hair at the tip of that root can only navigate through the empty pore space. But once it gets in there, actually it has tremendous pressure that it can generate and that's when you see these sidewalks being lifted up. But for but for it to get there, it needs that that pore space to. Otherwise, it will, the soil compaction will impact uh vegetation development. Erosion during storms that expose soil particles can contatch, suspended and transported, right? And runoff, loss of soil structure and compaction reduces infiltration, so instead of water going down, it's going across. The surface and result in more surface water runoff. Initial site soil assessments, okay, just kind of a part of a white paper gives a um. Gives some kind of heads up that there's a lot of information out there online in terms of uh uh soil surveys. Uh wetland inventories and other resources that can be helpful for initial analysis, right? It doesn't replace the bottom point here, uh field verification delineation by qualified soil scientist and wetland delineator. Uh but there's very good information out there available to do kind of an initial desktop analysis to see what's out there again. Uh that doesn't replace an actual site visit by trained professionals. Special considerations, I think Aaron talked about some recent legislation, H B two oh six, that specifically will talk about or speaks to. Uh disturbance of prime farmland uh with solar projects with a disturbance greater than ten acres. And also disturbances that impact uh forest, of course, uh this is to be implemented later this year for newly proposed projects. Um so there's a tool through the web soil survey or through a tool developed by Virginia Tech with collaborators called Bayland. Where you can look at and see, okay, where are the USDA-defined uh prime farmlands? And might that be impacted, so it's another online resource that might be of it. Okay, similarly, uh acid sulfate soils can be a big challenge, not necessarily uh here. And I'm aware of getting out of soil scientists, but I think more in the coastal areas. Uh but local exposure of sulfatic geologic materials that quickly weather into acid sulfate soil conditions. Uh pose probably the single greatest localized risk to soil and water quality at sites. Uh so sites should be evaluated for potential counter-exposed sulfatic geologic materials, because basically what's going to happen is the material oxidizes. Produces uh an acidic sulfuric acid material uh that brings the soil pH to like three, so very acidic soil conditions. Uh very difficult to get any kind of well, without proper lining and and then you don't get any vegetation established. We'll show a picture on the next slide. Maybe this might be hard to see in the back, but but really the highest risk of utility skill sort of development encountering these acid sulfate materials. Uh tends to be in the coastal plain, um and could potentially be exposed to stormwater ponds excavated into lower positions on the landscape. So again, more of an issue on the coastal plain, but again, there was a map on the previous slide that showed where the the primary presence of these acid sulfate soils are throughout Virginia. Just a a heads up on availability of that information. Okay, the kind of temporal component, uh short-term versus long-term, right? So it's important to understand the nature and differences in duration of soil impacts, some examples of short-term exposure of bare soils. Uh erosion losses can be mitigated by immediate revegetation, mulching or other short-term erosion control measures. Uh low pH infertile subsols can be remediated via line and fertilizer additions uh with revegetation, so some of these short-term ones can be remediated pretty quickly with. Proper adopt, proper planning and execution of best practices. Similar with moderate surface soil compaction of shallow, uh less than six inches. Example on the long-term side, significant root limiting compaction greater than twelve inches. So unless remediated via deep ripping practices, you're really getting down there below where the compaction layer is. Uh this should be considered a permanent long-term negative impact that could potentially limit plant productivity and water penetration for the life of the project. So depending on how things are done, you can have uh short-term, potentially short-term uh impacts uh that turn into the long-term because they weren't pro- properly uh remediated. So some, an example of kind of uh project development phases and active installation phase. Uh one-year-old site under rehabilitation there in the middle and on the far right is actually a three-year-old stabilized site, so you can kind of see. Why to have kind of a time component, because these are very different operating conditions and planning conditions. So avoidance visualization rehabilitation of soil impacts, so to avoid. Uh direct surface soil impacts, use of low tower pressure equipment, things like that, minimize. Impacts by limiting grading, trenching, overall cut and fill footprint. And rehabilitate by using measures such as surface tillage, dilucing compaction, rapid tops. And and rapid topsoil return for quick revegetation of those areas. Uh certain impacts will likely be more persistent, limitations for the lifetime of the project. Uh restoration of areas heavily disturbed on prime farmland soils to a hundred percent of their previous row crop productivity may not be possible. And this is based on some research that's linked to the uh the white paper. Uh that Dr. Daniels led with other similar types of uh site impacts. And going through extensive rehabilitation processes on prime ag lands to see what the relative yields were before now. Revegetation and vegetation management strategies, um really two phases, yeah, this is where the timing is a big issue. First goal is the short-term immediate control of the exposed site, right, to enhance uh reduce erosion. Uh and and reduce a stormwater runoff. And then the second phase is more of the longer-term uh maintenance of the site for the projected operational phase of the land use, you know? Erosion sediment control, it's going to be for partial solar grazing, uh what portions might be native uh pollinator habitat, things like that. But that that temporal shift, that timing shift requires a change in management strategy from that immediate short-term, when you have the um. Uh the 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 initial site work to actually going into more of a a long-term management phase. The specific recommendations need to be tailored for the applications, we hear about, you know, general mixed grass legume areas where there's mowing these sites, we hear about. Native grass pollinator plantings, we hear about potential for uh grazing, a lot of increasing sheet grazing. Those three different things would have very different kind of strategies and how this is actually executed. And again, the white paper goes into detail, some examples of how you might do that and including seed mixes and things like that. These are some of the examples where it gets into the, I shouldn't say weeds because we're not promoting weeds, but you know. But but it gets into very specific details of these protocols and that's what the white papers therefore are working. So enhancing soil quality, so this goes to the phase of, okay, we've uh done the initial site development, but how are we going to improve? A soil quality over the the active uh duration of the of the actual project period, the active phase. So organic matter content, bulk density, rooting depth and degree of aggregation are the most consistent indicators of soil quality, okay? For utility scale solar, a range of practices are encouraged to improve overall vegetation growth and resilience, protect local and regional water quality. And potentially lead to the development of carbon sequestration or nutrient reduction credits, more on that uh a little bit later. Actually on the right of the slide here, so we have some more examples about, okay, if it's going to be grazed, well, here's some specific recommendations. Practices related to grazing considerations that need to be considered at the planning phase. Right before we touch a shovel or dozer, let's let's think about some of these things to begin with the end in mind, right? But then practices to enhance and document changes in soil quality, the white paper uh does kind of drills into that a little bit in terms of. Is there a potential for relative carbon sequestration improvements, well, here's some protocols to help validate that. Alright, um. Develop better estimations for post-project remediation requirements. Uh this is where I kind of, we'll skip this one just a little bit, just because we've already talked a little bit about this, where. Based on experiences from other similar land disturbing activities, how can those experiences inform? You know, lacking a crystal ball, what some of the issues might be with utility scale solar at the end of the that thirty-fifth year. The Virginia Tech's conducted over thirty years of replicated research experiments and field studies on restoration of prime farmlands. Uh varying from post-mining uses, including prime farm and hayland pasture and commercial well-bowled pine plantings. There are some examples on the right there that highlights some of the the finding from from those research, again. Because of the the phase of development or the the rollout of utility skill solar, these aren't utility skill solar specific, but they're used here to inform. What might be some considerations? I will touch on this briefly, this is again the kind of decommissioning considerations. Where we also have, well, is it going to go to prime farmland, is it going to go back to pasture and hayland? Is it going to go to forest or other uses or is it just going to be re-energized, you know, a variety of activities? But based on the specific activities that are planned, what are some of the requirements for proper decommissioning? Some assumptions for setting the stage for proper decommissioning, the infrastructure will be removed, soil remediation practice will be followed. Over the the life of the project to be able to have that time, those thirty-five years to build and improve soil quality. Uh disturbed areas will be identified, uh deep ripping of subsols, uh we'll wait until the final closure. And disturbance history of the project will need to be accounted for and will most likely increase soil spatial variability of the restored site, so it's going to be different. Almost to the last slide here, this is on the stormwater runoff side, alright, so. One of the things, one of the challenges, there's a general lack of utility skill solar specific uh research findings in our region related to stormwater. Alright, that compare actual versus predicted stormwater runoff and sediment losses. Um the following areas deserve attention when developing or applying models to predict stormwater quantity and quality. So one of the challenges, N R C S has these uh curve numbers, um but they're not. Specified for this level of disturbance, so uh it states that this concept is not applicable to disturb soils and alternative methods should be employed. So the new guidance and one recommendation is to increase the curve number letter for the hydro- hydrologic soil group. Uh when doing these classifications, so there is some specific kind of alternative approaches. Make it more relevant to the utility skill solar context that need to be followed, uh that have big implications in terms of estimating stormwater runoff. And then this is the last slide, you know, you know, recommendations for stakeholders, stakeholders should be committed to the sustainable development management of utility skill solar. Uh application of a wide range of B M Ps to minimize impacts of soil water resources during the site development. And their careful integration of the soil vegetation management practices required. Uh following infrastructure removal, developers should rehabilitate, restore disturbed areas to optimize their productivity for the specific post-closure use. Like we talked about on the previous slide. Uh and finally encourage support full transparency throughout the project lifetime with respect to the planning, planning procedures. Expected short and long-term impact and scientifically-based projections for medium-long-term site productivity potentials uh for various sites. Uh and I think that's the the last from the side, this acknowledging side, again, we want to thank and acknowledge the collaborators. Um that we work with in this space from industry, uh from the different agencies. Uh permanent research project with Virginia D E Q and other collaborators uh related to exploring these issues in more detail in Virginia context. Well, that, thank you, thank you very much, I can't. If you later find that you're interested in this white paper and can't track it down, please reach out, let me know and we'll get to.
Well, they can track it down, the Southern County website.
When they were writing this paper, did they find a lot of these solar projects had uh erosion sediment and drainage issues? Cause that was one of the reasons that they went into this step.
That's a good question, so when we were doing the work up the white paper, finding research related to the stormwater erosion issues at these at these sites. And and I think one of the drivers was the research that was out there wasn't region-specific to the mid-Atlantic or Virginia area. Um and also it wasn't necessarily focused, what was out there wasn't focused on actual field measurement rather than just what they call modeling exercises.
One reason I asked this question, I saw with the Department of Environmental Quality in Virginia. They gave a six-figure fine to one company that had sites in Sussex County, West County and Buckingham County because of those issues. And I was just wondering if that was part of this study.
I I think situations like that were one of the drivers for Virginia D E Q being interested in and supporting a study like this because there. There had been a range of experiences across different sites.
I think Cunningham would require. We what we had thirty-eight thousand dollars in D E Q fines on that one. And that's how many acres? Forty-ish acre site, maybe, it's it's a fairly, it's a five megawatt project.
There was one question that got me, we had some people coming here before and talking. If you have pine on a piece of land, does it increase the acidity of that land?
I I can't, I can't, uh I I tend to think that it does, but my forestry days are far behind me and I'm trying to remember the the pine, you know, it's acidic, but I want to tell you with confidence, and I can't.
Okay, I bet that.
Well, thank you.
I will shake everyone's hand, I'm a little under the weather.
And I'm gonna interrupt just for one quick second, we need to extend since we started at five. And I'm gonna interrupt just for one quick second. We need to extend since we started at five. I'll make a motion to extend to eleven.
Alright, motion made by Mr. Sheridan, seconded by Mr. Goode, all favor. Alright, and uh last up, we have uh Caitlin Jordan with Virginia Farm Bureau.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. Please bear with my voice. I know it's not pretty to listen to. I apologize. Uh it was important for me to come down here tonight, so I wanted to make sure I was able to speak through it. So if my voice goes out, I certainly apologize. Um my name is Caitlin Jordan. I am with the Virginia Farm Bureau. I've been there a little over a year. I am a local and state advocacy specialist and regulars lawyer coordinator. I work hand in hand with our local county farm bureaus to ensure that they have the tools needed to be able to engage with the wonderful folks like you all. At their local and state level to advocate for things potentially like land use, to share positions on. Solar to to make sure that they have their voices heard at the seat, I mean agriculture has a seat at the table at every step of the way in in county government. So a little overview of what we're going to talk about this evening. I'm going to give you a little bit of the structure of how Virginia Farm Bureau works in case it's a completely new concept to you, which I don't think it will be. I'm going to share some of our solar policies. Um we're going to define prime farmland, which has already been defined. And I think, you know, four times the Trumps are going to keep defining it tonight. Um talk about farmland preservation and property rights and how to thread that needle. Um. Talk about how where your prime farmland is in Fluviana County and how agriculture has impacted this county. Um to talk about hospital two oh six, um some potential recommendations for ordinances and some additional perspectives for you all to consider. Alright, so this lift is heavy to be the advocacy organization for an industry like agriculture. Um agriculture is the heartbeat of Virginia. It's our number one private industry and the heartbeat of the Virginia Farm Bureau is our members. Um agriculture impacts every single Virginian every single day, um and we have to rise to the occasion to most um. Best meet the responsibility of advocating for our farmers and foresters in Virginia. Ninety-seven percent of farms in Virginia are family owned. It has over eighty um million economic impact. And it touches every part of Virginia's economy. And um the Virginia Farm Bureau Federation is really an advocacy grassroots organization. Um it starts at the county level. It all boils down to the county level. It's our most, um it is the backbone of our organization. And we ensure that we are advocating on issues that most impact our membership. And I'll touch on our policy development process a little bit. Um again, saying that everything begins at the county level and county service policy issues or surfaced issues that they think would potentially. Result in a resolution that governmental relations can advocate for the General Assembly for or against. So for example. Um you know, we support land use assessment, that could be one. And that will start at the county level. It would get approved by the entire county farm bureau. It would get approved at resolutions and then get approved at our state convention. So it's voted on three times and it's really a whole all encompassing unified effort of all of our producer members. Um we work to promote and the understanding of our number one private industry. We are comprised of eighty-eight county farm bureaus across the state. With over thirty-three thousand producer or farmer members. And um we are the largest grassroots organization representing commodities and all types of agriculture across the state. So these are just some fun pictures. Um we love to have our members come down to the General Assembly during session. And talk with legislators um at the state level, uh even uh I think local level as well. To advocate for or against legislation that impacts them every day because everything touches agriculture, it really does. Okay, so just some few fast facts that I think will be helpful to think about. Um the recent twenty twenty-four USDA census of agriculture, which looks at the twenty twenty-two data. Um recently came out and the average age of the US farmer continues to climb. Um in twenty twenty-two, the average age was fifty-eight point one years, and I love that fifty-eight point one, you know, I think even when you get older, you're saying, you know, I'm fifteen and a half, you know. Um so in Virginia, the average age of our farmer is fifty-nine years old. And the American Farming Interest reports that nearly three hundred million acres of American farmland are expected to change hands in the next twenty years. As population increases, by twenty fifty, farmers will continue to grow seventy percent more food on less land and with less water. So I know you all had meat here today to get your questions. But a question for you all is how can you be most purposeful in your zoning process that preserves our future food security? While also acknowledging that not every farmer has an heir to their farm. So in Virginia and across the country, our farmers are doing more with less as input, labor, and land costs continue to rise. Our farmers was continuing to rise to the occasion with less land in in production and ever increasing regulations. From twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-two, Virginia's lost about ten percent of its farms. And with more demand on our grid now than ever before, as as we expect that to continue to increase with data centers popping up left and right. It is also important to remember that the demand on our farmer has also never been greater. Um it is on our local and state leaders to address the conflicting issue of land use head on and ensure that the race to power. That in the race to power Virginia, we also don't leave her hungry. So here are some of our policies um surrounding solar. We support requiring all utility scale solar facilities to maintain a nutrient management plan. Prior to construction and throughout the existence of the facility. We support classifying solar panels as appropriate structures. Um in the last two, we oppose any legislation that would allow state authority over localities and developing utility scale solar projects. I know you all heard, I'm sure, about the two bills that we had at General Assembly this session from Sullivan and Deeds and Van Valkenburg. That would have really stripped away local government zoning authority when it came to solar. We were adamantly opposed, this piece of legislation, we're all team local. Um because there really isn't a one size fits all approach for solar. Um and uh I, you know. Uh as as this, this is a, I think, a moving target for everyone when it comes to solar. And so as things continue to change. And as more information becomes available to us, a one-size-fits-all approach really doesn't help.
We we greatly appreciate your all's position against those bills.
Great, absolutely. Was more than happy to help. Um it was uh a a good fight and, you know, we appreciate the legislators for understanding our position and. You know, it's just uh something to support, to support, to be able to to get it to go away, so. So. Let's see. Yes. So if a utility scale solar facility is to be installed, we recommend it be located on brown fields, landfills, or other mine reclamation sites. And this is something that I think is one of the most important policy positions. We oppose solar facilities being referred to as solar farms. Um we support requirement to avoid prime farmland when locating utility scale solar facilities. If they are located on prime farmland, the solar developer should be mandated to return the land to productive farmland at the end of the project's lifecycle. When it comes to um the avoidance of prime farmland, as we talk about prime farmland a little bit later in the presentation. While that is a wonderful, and it is the standard that we have when it comes to mitigation strategies, I also want you all to be cognizant of the fact that. A farmer in your area, that land is primed to him because it's producing the food that he's able to grow for the for that area. So the prime standard, while it's a national standard and while we have a state definition. Might not fit the soil that Farmer Joe has in your county, but to him, that land is prime and without it, he wouldn't be able to have a living. So I do want to make that clear as well. Um so, you know, as we've heard the a lot this evening, um more studies need to be done. I think that that is really the bottom line here. And we want those to be done on the impact of uh of utility scale solar on agriculture, environmental impacts. And um the cost of manufacturer disposal, reuse or recycle of material inputs, but before any additional projects are approved on agricultural lands. We support requiring a minimum of a fifty foot, that's not food, excuse me, fifty foot riparian.
You know, we haven't had something.
All um utility scale solar facilities, next slide. Um we support more Virginia-based research on the economic viability of agricultural takes on utility scale solar sites. We support more information or demonstration sites being made available. I will say um for us on agricultural takes, there is no set criteria in Virginia and we are aware um that Virginia Tech has gotten. Several grants to understand this better, but we don't necessarily have any recommendations on this, that that's that topic area. Just to, I don't know, I figured that there would be some questions on that tonight, so. Um and then um we support local abandonment of bond requirements that would protect landowners from cleanup costs that may be associated with decommissioning. And we'll talk about that a little bit later this evening. Um ensuring that non-invasive weed weed-free certified seeds is determined by the Virginia State Seed Lab. Are for use on utility scale solar projects for ground cover, pollinator habitats. We support the purchase of excess power generated by solar installed agricultural buildings. We oppose utility scale solar facilities being eligible for land use assessment. And something I will share is food for thought. And Culpeper, um we saw how a locality could allow for rezoning or changing of the use. But continue to allow for enrollment and land use assessment until the change is actually done, until the zoning change happens. And my, and I don't have a position on this either way, but my, the questions to ask really are. What if the change in zoning didn't occur? That landowner would be effectively out of land use and would have had to pay five years and roll back taxes for a change in zoning. That never happened on his property. So I think that that is something to consider as well. Okay, defining prime farmland. So the Code of Virginia has a definition of prime farmland that does pull from the USDA NRCS definition of prime farmland. It's really looking at the soil characteristics. It's looking at things like um flooding. It's looking at access to water. Um it's looking at use of fuel, fertilizer, pesticides, and labor uh and erosion. And I wanted you all to see that about twenty-one percent of Virginia's prime farmland. You can see where all that's located here on um Vailin. Vailin's a great resource. Next slide. We've also talked about Vailin a lot this evening. Um it was uh created by the Virginia General Assembly in twenty twenty-two. To create a repository of prime farmland in Virginia, and I just wanted to stress that it's a great tool for localities to utilize these different layering tools. To inform effective and conscientious zoning and decision-making. Okay, I also wanted you to see a little bit about your area and how agriculture is impacting your area. So two hundred and eighty-nine farms. Two hundred and eighty-nine farms call Fluvana County home encompassing about fifty thousand acres. And ninety-eight percent of your farms are family farms. Five hundred and thirty-four producers call your county home and two hundred and fourteen of them consider them to be newer beginning farmers, which is stellar odds. We love that. Staple crops in your area are hay, soybeans, and corn. And woodlands encompass a great majority of the acres in Fluvana County, which I envision a lot of the solar would potentially be on the temperal end. That would be in the county. Okay, these are using the different layering tools on Vailin, which are very helpful. You can pick different things that you want to see. Like you could see the prime farmland, you can take that off, you can see prime farmland covered with where your electric utilities are. So if I were to give you Virginia Farm Bureau's position, it would be to avoid areas in the county where the prime farmland are. Um so looking at areas over here, and if you're looking at that intersection between transmission lines, potentially over in this area. Again, I don't know the county well enough to know what's over in that area, but avoiding the area in the green.
No, excuse me, negative. About half of it's Fort Union and a lot of it's Kentstown and Columbia. And so, so don't, don't just say it's all Fort Union.
Say too, um that another tool online is the NRCS's Web Soil Survey. Um I think that Josh had mentioned that also earlier this evening, but that's another um standardized way of looking at where prime farmland is located. Okay. We have heard a lot about hospital two oh six um this evening. Virginia Farm Bureau is an active member on that work group that was required out of that bill. This really works on establishing mitigation requirements for solar developers. As a result of a permit by rule for a small energy project, if there is a determination that there will be significant adverse impacts on wildlife, historic resources. Prime agricultural soils or forest lands. So um there is a disturbance if it's impacting more than ten acres of prime agricultural soils, more than fifty acres of contiguous forest lands. Or forest lands enrolled in a forestry preservation program. So um as mentioned earlier, those regulations have been released on regulatory town hall and should be open soon for public comment period. Virginia Farm Bureau will be making comments, but this should be a good, hopefully will be a good uh first place look. At where we can start looking at some of these um new additional regulations to impose on developers. Okay. So some food for thought, and all that's all this is, is just food for thought, because again, there is no one size fits all. You all know your county better than I do. Um but uh just some things to really think about when you're getting involved in this experience, assessing the impacts. You need to do an assessment, there needs to be an assessment and impact analysis on existing and future agricultural and forestry industries, including an environmental. Impact assessment. Um something that might not always be thought of is that impact of traffic impacts during construction and decommissioning. Involving the community. Um I what I haven't heard a lot about tonight is how is each project going to align with your comprehensive plan? Because the um zoning ordinance that you all create is really, um as I've talked with Aaron, the nuts and bolts, the. Fine-tuned details, how you are going to put this in place, but your goals, your view for the county, all of that is going to be laid out in your comprehensive plan. And you need to make sure that those two jive. Um involving the neighborhood prior to public hearings with the planning commission, I think that would involve those who would likely be benefic- beneficiaries of the solar. And also those who would be opposed to the solar. I think you need to hear all of those perspectives. And notifying adjacent landowners in writing. I think that having everyone in the neighborhood involved and aware could potentially. Uh quell a fire before it starts. Involving all stakeholders from the beginning, um define community preferred sites. So that will be land not well suited for farming and prioritizing siting on these sites. So whether that's concentration on rooftops, irrigation. Uh ditches, brown fields, and marginal lands. I think also there needs to be an understanding of the tax impacts to landowners with zoning changes. Because the land valuation might significantly increase if their land is previously enrolled in land use assessment. I think that could be a drastic change that would be seen. Um also, there needs to be an understanding of the burden taken on by the landowner to rezone his land. Um and to understand that there has not been really precedent for zoning land one way and then rezoning it back to a lesser intensive use. To ensure that that land is back to agricultural use. And to consider what other uses would be allowed in this new zoning district. How can you continue to preserve agriculture with this zoning change? So whether that's agricultural takes or um incentivizing agriculture in the zone, however you want to to go about doing that. Those are just some questions to think about. Protecting the land. So again, appropriate setback standards and buffers, establishing a maximum height of ground mounted panels. Again, that could potentially look like making them higher so that you can graze cattle under the panels, making them so far apart, the rows so far apart. That you can run combines between the rows. Again, that's just however you want to go about doing that. Um prohibiting topsoil removal, grading of the land. If you remove the topsoil, you will not get that land back to agricultural land. Um at the ending of that of that project. And placing pan- panels along the contours of the land. Decommissioning. Ensure that all broken or waste solar modules are removed from the site within sixty days of being taken out of service. Removal of abandoned solar generating equipment insured by bond with the county. I think that you want to ensure that your landowner, property owner is protected. Um if something changes hands and the the contract is different than when they originally agreed to it, that they're not per. They are not entitled to have to take on the costs of decommissioning. Um removal of all panels, infrastructure conduit and roads, reclamation of the site, insurance returning to its original condition. Soil and water testing through any solar panel, related heavy metals and contaminants and remediation. Um if it's detected and uh and I think that. As we heard earlier this evening, it really is on the county to vet and create regulations that. Create almost a standardization of construction and process that works for your county and your natural resources. Um these are best, we heard from Dominion this this evening too, these are best practices. These are not mandates on solar developers. Best practices are fantastic and I think that we need to have them, but they are not required for every developer to follow. And I think when you're looking at anything in life, right, you you want to look at those who are doing the best job that they can do and praise them for doing that. But you also need to understand that there might not be, um there might be a rotten apple or two in that in that basket. So under, I mean, that it can be both sides of the spectrum. And I also wanted to share, I'm sure you want to have another one of these meetings. But some additional perspectives to consider would be American Farmland Trust. They have some great smart solar principles. Um, and if you haven't talked, if you have not talked to Baco, the Virginia Association of Counties is also wonderful to hear from. Um, just wanted to throw out a couple of other friends and resources for you in case you hadn't thought of those yet. Thank y'all so much for having me. I really appreciate having the opportunity to be here and speak with you and bearing with my voice. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to, to answer them.
Questions or one of the, or items that you said you were going to address, which I don't think you really addressed was property rights. It, it was just not part of the slide, I don't think.
So I think like the Farm Bureau really does walk the line of property rights and preserving farmland. So it's how do you ensure that? A farmer who wants to keep his land in the family but doesn't have an heir is able to preserve that fam- that, that farmland. And keep that farmland together while also preserving fu- prime farmland. And I don't know, we necessarily have an answer to that. Um, so it's, it's a very delicate balance that we walk. Because our members are both landowners and also farmers and not every farmer has an heir to the farm. Not every, not everyone's son or daughter unfortunately is going into the farming business. A lot of them are branching out, so. A lot of, there are new incentivized options for farmers like solar that are coming and allowing them to keep their land. There and theirs in their family. Um, but we have to think about how. Where, maybe where to put those solar panels that will allow for both.
And then separate and but somewhat related because you know, the, the UN climate summit was held today or whatever. We're not going to hit our targets worldwide. We're going to be six years early before we surpass the sort of expected goal of to be a point. Does, does the Farm Bureau have a position on how climate change is going to affect its farmlands in Virginia here? Maybe not. Would that be important too?
We operate at the will of our members, absolutely. So if they surface something about it and we pass it at resolutions and pass it at convention. Then absolutely we will be going to bat for that. So, um, as governmental relations, we kind of share with them. Where there might be gaps in our policy and give them some ideas. Like for example, I use this as like a personal vendetta, but, uh, there was a bill, there was a bill at the session that was introduced. That would have allowed localities the opportunity to ban gas powered leak blowers. And I, as Caitlin Jordan, did not like that bill because I thought that it opened the door for other gas powered machinery. And that could eventually lead to, um, tractors and combines and everything like that. So I, I did not like the bill and I wanted to be able to speak in opposition of it, but I unfortunately could not because we didn't have any policy on that. So every policy development meeting I went to this session, I shared with them about that bill. And I'll be darned if every single one of those counties is like, well, we want to make sure we have policy that addresses this. So we share with them where there might be gaps in policy, but we certainly do not sway them one way or the other. We want to make sure that our, our members are really the ones crafting the policies that we stand behind.
That, that suggests to me that those farmers who are the most vested. In how climate change would or would not affect them as it affects their livelihood. Don't see changes happening that would, that would provoke them to tell you to advocate, uh, in that direction. See what I'm saying? It doesn't, doesn't seem that the actual people that own the dirt are. Are seeing enough red flags to get you to advocate.
Well, they'll be seen, I mean, you know, not to speak one way or the other, but they see the red flags when they haven't had rain in two weeks. Um, they see the red flags when the, uh, when, um, the temperature is raised X amount of degrees in like so many days. I mean, not to speak one way or the other in climate change, but they're still seeing the effects of. They're, they're the ones on the ground. They are the most, um, they are the best conservators of our land that we have. And so if they're, if anyone is going to understand what the world is doing to our earth, they are.
Are there emerging or, or other, you know, spokesman Dominion talked about it being sort of like a. Um, uh, I don't know if this is the exact term you used, but sort of like a tool belt, like it's not just solar, it's not just wind, it's not just, you know, natural gas. Um, clearly, you know, you all have. Apparently far more concerns about this than probably most of the other groups that spoke tonight. Do you have any sort of? Um, or have you discussed, and I know you just kind of went through your policymaking process and everything. Have you all had any discussions or, or do you know of something you may bring to the table to, to your group and say, hey, these are some options? That, um, i- if, if, if utility scale solar is something we're concerned about, here's something we can look at as an alternative. Or, uh, perhaps something that is better and protects prime farmland more so than this, that is not your traditional. You know, you got this push for renewal, so what would be an alternative in your opinion? And I, I don't know if that's personally or, or from your.
Well, I mean, I will say right now, I think the focus, one of the focuses of Farm Bureau when it comes to solar is the placement of those panels. And being cognizant of where we're placing them, um, and ensuring that those are not on prime farmland. Um, and ensuring that they are on reclaimed sites, ensuring they're on rooftops, parking lots, um, places that. Uh, do not provide for us, um, as in like food and fiber and things like that. Um, and so I think that that is where our focus is right now. Um, and I think that, you know, with the governor having an all of the above approach for, for energy. You know, there is development in other areas of renewables as well, but Virginia Farm Bureau doesn't have really anything. And we, that, those are our policies on solar and we haven't really discussed formally.
Right.
Another alternative. We, we, uh, for example, we're like, we're not in favor of nuclear one way or the other. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I was thinking along the lines of if y'all had even visited that as an organization or anything.
No, but we're, um, we're looking at some different ways to. I, I think that there are some potential places for us to speak and have a, a, a say on how battery storage is going to impact us as well. Because that's also going to take up land as well as data centers. So I think we're trying to get around the curve to other, uh, uses of land that will potentially come our way, uh, that are coming our way, head, head fast, so.
And you might have this statistic as well, but and then, and then our just thoughts on the general sort of, as you, as you pointed out. Farming as a profession is on the decline, if you would, to some degree. And I know the Farm Bureau is actively involved in trying to promote so that doesn't happen. But in the cases of, as you put it, not every farmer has an heir, which will take on the land. What do you see typically happening to that land when, when it isn't, when it goes out of the farmer's hands, if you would?
Well, so I mean, it depends, right? I mean, if like farm succession planning is a whole other topic in of itself. And is something that really requires a lot of deep diving and potentially a lot of tears and he'll wait hand holding around the, the table as a family. Um, but. You know, when it's, I think that we're really starting to address and peel back the layers of what is happening to this land. If there is no air, more sound, more so now than ever now with solar. Because it's providing an opportunity for a financial incentive for farmers to keep that land. Instead of just selling it or, you know, some other option. So I think that we're really starting to see what's happening with that land now more than ever. Um, uh, something that is really, I think, taking Virginia. By, by surprise and has been a problem that's happening sort of lately more now, so now than ever is, um. The concerning trend of farm consolidation. So seven percent of Virginia farms account for eighty-eight percent of. The state's agricultural output, demonstrating how big farms just keeping bigger while the smaller struggle. Um, so.
Can I ask clarification? Are you saying seven farms is in seven owners?
Seven percent of.
Most of the farming in Fluvana now is done by large farmers from someplace else and come here, justice and so on. Yeah, it's angled. Other questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And, um, I will leave with Eric a few of my business cards, absolutely.
All right, so I, do you have any other further questions?
Anybody have any further question?
You know, for any of the presenters?
I, I have one question for Dominion. Uh, I've heard a lot about, um. That the agreements don't include in cases the, of the, for lack of a better term, the feet of the panels being removed. That when panels are removed, that, uh, property owners are, in the agreements would be left. In some situations with the bracing that's in the ground, I guess in concrete or whatever. Do you know if that's true or is that true with you all?
I think it's the decommissioning requirements do vary. And I know there's a kind of a form agreement that's out there that you'd want to consider. I think there's some amount of conduit or vertical line that in some instances, localities do allow to. Be there post-decommissioning. Um, I believe all the concrete and gravel and those types of structures typically are required. To be removed as part of the decommissioning plan. But all that would get established when you set up your decommissioning requirements. We would do a, or any developer would do a decommissioning study to determine what are the costs to decommission, whatever standards you dictate. And then we typically provide financial assurances that those funds will be available at the end of the project's life. To meet the requirements of the decommissioning plan.
You all.
And some localities require that decommissioning plan to be refreshed at some cadence, like every five years. You need to re-study the decommissioning plan to ensure that whatever financial sureties provided. And it continues to be adequate to meet the decommissioning requirements.
But as a policy of Dominion, do you all have? Properties that you lease own or whatever in this, in the state of Virginia? That include not removing s- steel that would be above ground from the property when the.
I'm not aware of any instance where we don't have to remove steel that's in the ground.
Okay, thank you.
I think there are some instances where some electrical wire is essentially cut off and is, is kept there. But I think that, I'm not familiar with a lot of decommissioning facilities, but I think that. Is not uncommon that allows some electrical line to remain beneath the surface.
Thank you.
And I have a question, um, for Dominion, since you all are doing this. Um, do you all do any periodic check on the soil? Like maybe every five years or ten years to see if there are any issues? Or do you all just wait till the end of the project and just hope that there's nothing?
No, there's certainly some. County ordinances that require testing and, and we do that. We certainly want to be in compliance with those requirements. Uh, we have a pretty extensive operation and maintenance program. I don't know the, the cadence of soil testing.
Mm-hmm.
Um. If it's required, we certainly do it. I just don't know if that's something we routinely do as part of our standard practice or not.
So it's pretty much up, up to local ordinances.
Uh, we would. And then well, like well water testing, I think there's been some localities require that. I don't know that it's necessarily effective to do that. Um, but there's some localities that require some of those.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of prime farmland and, you know, a farmer don't want to wait twenty years to find out. He can't get that farmland back to what it was before solar facility was there. And if he had known five years or ten years before, maybe some things could have been done to fix what the problem was instead of waiting twenty years.
Yeah, we're certainly not opposed to, to doing that.
That would be something we could say we're going to require testing every three to five years. And if an issue is found in the wells nearby, we, we could put that in there as well, that you test the wells nearby.
And you know, the soil study that was presented, I mean, that really talks about the impact when you're building.
Right.
And when you're taking it down, as long as you do that properly, you're not going to have a significant downturn. If you don't do it properly, good, if you create a lot of compaction.
Right, hopefully. Yeah.
So, you know, that, that was really interesting to listen to. Do one sort of general question maybe for both of you guys over here, but, you know, we've talked, we've sort of danced around, uh, uh, the clean energy goals and needs. How much of, you know, the pressures does Dominion feel due to UCD sort of from a legislative purpose? In terms of meeting those goals and how important is solar in meeting those goals?
So we have already met that first interim target under the Virginia Clean Economy Act, so we've hit that. When we do our strategic planning process, we're looking at a fifteen year view and a twenty-five year view of whether or not we're going to have the energy needs to meet our. Customer load demand, we run a bunch of sensitivities in that model. If you, in some of those models, we force the VCA targets to be met. And others we say, you know, we're going to let the model pick the most economic generation resource to be selected. The difference between those two scenarios, whether we force building, everything is required under the VCA. Or we let the model economically pick the various resources, whether it be solar or another technology. They're pretty close. So we would be deploying the same levels of solar. Because that is what's most economic for our customers, because that's the right thing to do. In hindsight, we didn't need the VCA to tell us to do that. We're going to meet those mandates. But it's driven by economics, it's not driven by politicians setting targets that we now have to meet.
Very interesting.
And we're going to be issuing our, our next IRP October fifteenth of this year. You're going to see our customer load demands are going up from what they were last year. But that's going to kind of lay out, one, how are we going to meet the required portfolio standard or PS standard? It's also going to show various sensitivities on meeting the VCA targets. What if you economically let the model pick resources and we'll have kind of a refreshed model in a couple of months? Think it was, uh, not forgotten your name by now, so I apologize. I was, um, Barry Hill, right? Okay. So you had mentioned, uh, you were the first presenter, I think, and you had mentioned something about you, you're the one that had the buffer of the one mile, um, scaled buffer around the. Utility lines. I think we've, I, I feel like it's been, and maybe it's the way I'm taking it, it's been kind of harped on us that these things have to go by transmission lines. They have to go by transmission lines, but fifty percent of what you showed us in Luisa is outside of, a, a mile outside of transmission lines. And, and I think, sir, you mentioned that you kind of alluded to, and correct me if I'm wrong, that they can be built further away. It just costs you a little bit more money, which is why they want to. So I guess my question is bottom line is they can be built further away. It doesn't have to be right along within a, a certain radius of these transmission lines in order to have utility scale solar. Is that correct?
It's correct. And that project in Luisa, I believe is the one that I'm familiar with. But a good portion of that project is a lot closer to that transmission line. It just so happens that one end of the project is further away.
Sixteen hundred acres, isn't it? I think.
It, yeah, it's big. I don't know the exact, you know, but it's, it's large.
And we're not opposed to building projects further away, but it comes at a higher cost and it does have more impacts. Because you're having to put poles, you know, between the solar project and the transmission system. You're having to secure those easements between those two. You're now needing to maintain what we call a gentile line. So ideally you're next to the, the transmission line to avoid the additional costs that you would incur. But we're not opposed, if there's an ideal project that's two and a half miles away and the locality supports it. That's great. Typically, people don't want to see new transmission lines in their community, so we try to avoid it to the extent we can.
It's interesting because we, we, you know, we met as a group, you know, we sort of had a small group of two. Planning commissioners and two board supervisors and staff to try to come up with some ideas in terms of what we should do with regard to zoning and how it should happen. And I really wish we'd had this meeting before we did that, because there's so much information that we learned. And, you know, for example, Barry, you were talking about, you know, putting over late districts and how that's not normal and maybe some of the benefits there. And they look at, our focus was pretty much on the idea of transmission lines. But then you say, okay, but if it's a certain size under, I think it was under what, ten megawatts or so, that a lot of times that's just done. As distribution is, I think the term.
Yeah, that's what I was going to clarify.
Yeah.
We're seeing a lot of projects being built at the distribution, um, level. And so those projects, like in your definition, or. Um, and so some of these like three, five, ten megawatt projects are just not connecting to transmission and distribution. So those are the products that you're most likely going to see, could be pretty far from transmission. Now, a transmission level project, likely the interconnection itself is going to be pretty close to the interconnection. But, um, I like to just make sure that counties are aware that there are projects that probably meet their definition of utility scale. That are not transmission level. Yeah, you can connect a project up to about twenty-four megawatts. To the distribution line if there's capacity on that one. It's got to be three fa- one of the three. To the distribution line if there's capacity on that one. It's gotta be three phase, one of the three phase distribution lines. But you can go as large as about twenty-four megawatts.
Right. Now, this is really very, very instructive and very helpful. I really appreciate it each time.
And I I'd say for me, this is. More, less good or bad of solar than. Uh, ordinances and so on. To me, this is really, how do we protect ourselves? And understandably. It it shows how important it is that we do this right because it is on us. As you said from Dominion, you're gonna meet whatever our regulations are. You're not in the business of creating regulations and. Um, so boy, this is a big hairy deal for us to be sure what those ordinances are from the start. Cause you, you you put it in and 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 it goes, you put it in and it's wrong, it's gonna be wrong.
Well, and 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 to that point, I think, you know, maybe. Kind of our initial approach to how we looked at it and from from our committee meeting and saying, here's how we do it and our recommendations onto the planning commission. To look at it from that perspective is maybe flawed already, right? Because we really based it on being within a mile of high transmission lines. And that, that's a somewhat of a flawed model based on the information that we got today, so. Yeah, uh, and and created other problems where seemed to concentrate development in certain areas. Uh, whereas we were trying to get rid of the special use permitting process in a certain way, but that's one of the most powerful tools that you have. In this process and we're doing so.
Cause I think we were dealing more with a solar district or special use, right?
Yeah.
Versus a overlay district, so.
Well, but still, it's it's kind of those same thing. We were concentrating solar district in a particular area.
But the overlay would would remove the conditional use, correct?
Yeah, we didn't do that. We kept the.
And I think another point Ms. Jordan brought up, and I brought it up several times, is comprehensive plan, um, you know, I I. I don't think we talked enough about it in context of that and maybe that. I don't know if that needs to go hand in hand with the ordinances that you guys are discussing on the subcommittee, but and and I think it goes to your point about. Um, that you were making about the, some of the information we learned about where it needs to be and and maybe. Having the conversation now that we have some of the information we have about. Having it distributed a little bit more. I mean, I I think obviously my main concern and I voiced it to the to the planning commission since I. It's when I was on that and since I've been on the board, that my concern is that a lot of it is. Concentrated in 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 the Fort Union area where they have already shouldered a lot of the energy burden for this community and they're dealing with the coal ash and they're dealing with these things and. Yes, you have people, you know, tell you that it's clean and it's 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 this and it's that and it's the other, but these people have concerns and rightfully so because of what they've experienced for generations down in that community and. Um, i- i- and so I I think that there is some concern down there. Because that's where we're hearing all of these things and they have been consistently told, well, it's because you're close to transmission lines and it's like.
Right.
You know, and so uh, that was surprising to me that that that. I don't wanna say it was debunked, that 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 argument, then that that was a developer. I mean, we've been hearing that a lot from the developers. I'm sure Ms. Hope can tell you that and. Um, it looks like Nadine's gone, but um, it's been, well, because you're close to transmission lines and well. Obviously, we know now that it can't be done, but it is a little bit probably more expensive for the developer and there is some aesthetics involved with getting it obviously further away from those transmission lines. But those are all conversations, you know.
And I share that concern and have articulated coming at this as a historian. That the impact on those communities that developed. Uh, from the enslaved coming off the plantations into that area. That are bound together by a common history and strong kinship. Are really coherent communities and what we're talking about here is a heavy burden. On an area that kind of constitutes an environmental justice.
Right.
Question for me.
Yeah, I agree, cause my concern, well, my major concern was that a lot of the transmissions lines. Ran through African American communities. You know, we're talking about Brimmo, West Bottom, Cloverdale, Columbia, Kent Store. That's where all the transmissions lines are and why do they have to take the brunt of all the solar? For the entire county. Um, and you know, people are concerned about their properties and their property values. They're concerned about their homes. They don't want this down there and. You know, unfortunately, that's just the way it is, you know. They bought homes years ago and that's where they are and they don't wanna move, they don't wanna leave, but they don't wanna see this either, so.
Not to mention it's a prime agricultural land.
Bobby Church Road was about the cutting point, Bobby Church Road down on further south, straight down to the south. Everything to the west.
Slide that map in half right there and go up from.
Everything on the western half, everything on the western half was the non brown.
So that was.
Have to put in like mozzarella.
But yeah, it's good to hear that. I guess what my. Yeah. In the county besides, you know, elsewhere other than following the transmission lines.
Right.
So is there some deadlock property somewhere?
Well, I know, and then what's what's echoing Mr. O'Brien's point, you know, if you're gonna draw a solar district or or talk about what this S district would be, you're obviously. Probably it it would have put language in it that said that needs to be certain things to sort of direct it there, but. Which would have directed it in all of the places that we're talking about, but I think this kind of opens us up for maybe a more equal distribution of it. Um, and maybe conversations about, you know, I I know some localities have ordinances where if you build one here, you know, so you can't build another one here. Within a certain radius for a certain amount of time, so.
And I think definitely we need a limitation on the amount of acreage that we put.
Put, right.
Into the. Without a doubt.
And start small and get bigger, would be my opinion, but I know I'm one of.
But you, I I do think that you have to really focus some careful. On the avoidance, minimization and mitigation of the impacts. That that's kind of where the rubber gets a road and that's something that's gonna require. Real careful thinking.
So there's the good news is there's a lot more. Uh, you know, as problems occur, right?
Sure.
And and as sort of flower that is, flower cell, you know. It's bad. If something bad happens in one of our sites, it's bad and affects us negatively because it impacts, you know, with exactly this type of. Decision-making and it impacts community response and so on, so. Being able to anticipate being more aggressive in their standards and, you know, maybe easy to require it right now is in the long term. Best interest of. Their portfolio.
Well, and I think it's interesting to your point, Mr. Mr. Barry Hill's first slide, if you showed where kind of the solar first started down there on the eastern shore. And was first starting to be developed, they had the strict disorderance, they had the red, they had the red.
The red, right.
And so I think what that shows is they they were perhaps like, oh, shoot, we 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 have to, we have to amp it up and. You know, I guess approaching it from that perspective, I I obviously I I agree there needs to be flexibility. I would rather. Seeing the way those early localities kind of, kind of took that next step and and really amped it up after that, it almost seems like a a signal of, hey, maybe you should. Start small and then get a little bit harder. Or start big, start heavier on the, on 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 the ordinances and things and then work back or. Or negotiate that if 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 a project comes to you and has a good point to to make the buffer smaller, then you know, you have that latitude in the conditional use.
Yeah, I agree.
One question, do you think we should reconstitute this committee?
Yeah.
Before we go further with some of this stuff that we're doing.
Yes.
To do a little more.
Committee's on me until September.
Okay. In theory, we have handed to the planning commission this idea of a solar district with a special use project. We kind of laid some guidelines and thinking this could work could be, but there's nothing saying they can't make the solar district A one, you know, I mean, it's just. It's sort of a two-step process and the idea, and one of the ideas behind the solar district would be to. Be able, and and I think you and Farm Bureau folks said, you're you're pulling it out of land use anyhow. So you have a higher ability to tax that land of that respect, so.
Be perfect, well, we've gotta get the comprehensive plan board.
Right, we really do. But that's in in order, right? Um, we started on comprehensive plan last fall, um, the group of us, um. And then we had to change in employees, so it stopped, so we're gonna be bringing that back up. But we were just trying to get everybody set and.
Four years.
Yeah, well, we were, we started working, when was it? August, September last year?
Yeah, we really started back to the COVID kind of.
Right, yeah.
Threw things in.
And then we lost our planning director who was leading it and then it kind of.
Last week, Mr. Porson, the planning director and Ms. Ferris, we discussed the new schedule.
New schedules.
Bringing it back. It's basically the next few months.
Good.
We'll come back.
Okay.
But I think the director from the board was. Didn't we have a date specific to the A one? And then ordinances being.
Yeah, the ordinance, I mean, you start meeting about that.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, but I don't know that we need to go back and, because we gave you pretty much a wide scope in terms of.
Hmm.
You know, what your approach from that standpoint.
I mean, the planning commission agreed with the special zoning district rather than the overlay district.
Right.
Yeah.
Because we gave both options combined and she knows their recommendation.
What is the, the, what is.
Then you have to develop. You supplemental regulations, so.
Not prime farming.
Definitely not prime farmers.
I would see that up in the corner up there.
So I think we're on track, right? Of what we were trying to do, we're on track. We just gotta look at it further and go from there.
Yeah, I mean, I I I think the planning commission and the board received some additional useful information tonight on on maybe some things that maybe. We didn't consider before as we were looking at this, so.
When, when does it come to the board regarding the A one piece?
It depends after the plan, plan question public hearing, then it would come to the board.
Which is when?
Um.
Is it a July?
July. I don't know, I'll have to talk to the planner.
Yeah, I I I care where we are, I know.
And then basically after that, then the new zoning district with the supplemental regulations will come to the planning commission and then come to the board. Because the planning commission decided made more sense to do them separately and the committee as well.
Really, can we take a vote? I mean, could you, could you essentially, I guess it wouldn't speed up the process on the S end, but I mean, if. That's the direction you're going. Do they need the ninety days for the per first piece still, or is that kind of set in stone?
No, I mean, it doesn't have, I mean, those. We can, the motion of the board were, I think it was a resolution, a resolution, had to look back, and the board was to come back by June twentieth. With the recommendation, so. Oh, I'll have to look back and see if there was a motion or. It may, I think the resolution was that the board wouldn't consider any applications until October, I believe. That's the other part that was part of that. Because we had to come back on CEB solar by, um, I think it was November, because that was the twelve month timeframe, so that's why we said we weren't gonna. Consider any application, the board wasn't going to consider any applications until October.
Any other questions or anything? Right. I don't intend to stand here, some of the things we heard tonight or some of the things we've heard before. Certain of the groups.
And I, I don't assume in there you've got the charts, but everyone's staff, I think, it's a lot of communication, I'm sure, getting those people here. I appreciate y'all doing that. I think that was very, very helpful.
Yeah, no, I wanna, I wanna thank all the speakers and presenters tonight for, you know, taking time out of your busy schedules and being here this evening and again, apologize. Started a little late and went a little later, but we really appreciate all the information.
That's why he looked at me and said, oh, we are going past ten minutes, like, yeah.
Can we tell me we'd be out by nine o'clock?
We, I forgot, we still have more.
We have a happy meeting.
So we're really quick, I mean, they have, I guess we'll let them adjourn quick and then we'll just have have some quick conversation on where how we move forward here.
Do I have a motion to adjourn this part of the work session of the planning commission? Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Kilpatrick, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Schiff and and.
Jumping all over.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, five zero, we're adjourned.
And I would like to specifically thank Ms. Morgan for bringing the missense. I had something to eat.
So 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 board members.
Everybody have a good one.
Thank you all. I'll just thank y'all for coming, everybody. So board members, do you wanna do closed session quickly first or do you wanna go through the rest of the meeting?
We only got the two things.
Right.
Yeah, but but we're we're already, we're already out.
Yeah.
Closed session.
Well, I'm, I'm in the. I mean, we we have some food too, if you wanna get some food during closed sessions.
See, what are we saying?
I think probably it'd be good to get a closed session.
You should.
We're good.
All right, Mr. O'Brien. Ah, Mr. Chair. I'm willing to propose being be adjourned in the Savannah County Board of Supervisors Committee on Concession, be resolved, and write this. Thus hereby certified to the best of each member's knowledge, one and public business matters lawfully exempted from open media files for me to get through that. Thirty seven eleven A of the Court of Review nineteen fifty has been entered into only six public business matters as were identified in motion, but we suppose convene or heard discussed or considered.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. O'Brien, second by Mr. Sheridan, roll call. Call my name. Good. Not good.
Hi.
So we have presentations, are we just making some motions?
Do we stand motion bring that items back off the table?
Uh, so moved.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Goode, second by Mr. Sheridan, on favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Chair votes I four zero. Gee. Yep, action matter.
Yep, okay. So it's up on the screen there. Yeah. So this is an authorization to advertise for public hearing to amend six section six dash one dash five with the county code to increase erosion and sediment control fees, Mr. Witten.
So yeah, so the proposed amendment to the county code section six dash one dash five basically simplifies the schedule by increasing two fees and eliminating the other fees. So Roger Black and Andy Wells worked on this. Schedule to basically more appropriately recoup you recoup Rogers time for when he's reviewing these extensive site plans, the E N S plans. And so that's made additional revenue would be ten thousand dollars. So the public hearing will be on July third.
And and just just so you know, right now what he has, he has, I think it's about a two hundred and fifty dollar initial review fee and then every. Um, subsequent re-review he does, it's a hundred and fifty dollars. Most times he probably does at least. Three re- two to three re-reviews. So that's additional money. So what they're doing, they're just charging a higher upfront.
Thousand.
A thousand upfront and there's no re-review fees and this will just kind of simplify things from an administrative standpoint, but also like we did with the building inspection fees that hadn't been updated and forever.
Well, and a lot of developers are just using him and submitting re-review, re-review. Yeah. Such a small fee. So it makes sense that there's a large fee upfront to get everything right.
Yeah.
First time.
And 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 the revenue was not in the budget because we really hadn't looked at Rogers fees at the time. So. This estimate of ten thousand dollars will just be extra in the budget or we'll go back to the general fund if if that's if it passes.
Right. All right. I move that the Board of Supervisors advertise the amendment to the county code to amend section six dash one dash five to increase erosion and settlement control review fees for a public hearing to be held July third twenty twenty four.
Mr. Goode made the motion, second by Mr. O'Brien on favor.
All right.
Chair votes I passes four zero. H.
Um, so I'll hand this to this is the Mountain Hill Rural Cluster Subdivision waiver request. We spoke to the board about this before.
Correct.
Mr. Fortune, I'll kind of let you go through.
Okay. So just a brief presentation, this is a rural cluster subdivision in the fourth Union District, tax map fifty, section eight, parcel thirty three. Um, you're already familiar with the project is a twenty five acre lot and the applicant, the Havana Luisa Housing Foundation is proposing to subdivide it. With nine cluster lots. Uh, they're on place, uh, total seventeen housing units is what they're planning. Uh, this was recommended by the Planning Commission. At its meeting on September twelve, two thousand twenty three, however, they did so despite. The fact that it does not meet density or open space requirements, and that's the parcel there for your. Your benefit and that's a subdivision sketch. So what we are requesting here, and this is just some some brief statistics. So they're short on the open space by quite a bit. They only have sixty one point seven percent and they have seventeen dwelling units. So it's, uh, they're short on the density requirement as well. Uh, so what we need from the the board tonight is to approve or authorize us to advertise. A public hearing to consider a waiver request on the density and open space requirements for the subdivision.
So no one clarification, planning commission can't grant a waiver, on board supervisors can grant a waiver of the county cash. So that's why it has to come to the board and can't come through.
It doesn't have to go to them first.
No.
So.
And we've talked about it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we need to read the language or?
There's motion.
I'm with the board supervisor to advertise a request for a waiver to the rural cluster requirements in their section. Twenty two dash four, ten dot three of the county code of of the county code for the mountain hills subdivision for a public hearing to be held July thirty twenty four.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. O'Brien, second by Mr. Goode on favor, say hi.
Hi.
Chair votes I passes three to. Three zero, right?
Right.
Yep. So have do we need to account for Mike?
Just in the.
Yeah.
Caitlin.
He got it.
Okay.
She saw three of them.
Now I'm now I'm tied down. If if Tim were here to pull three items, I couldn't go to the bathroom.
Consent agenda.
Uh. Uh, I move that we does anybody have ask your question?
Does anybody want to pull?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Goode, second by by Mr. O'Brien on favor.
Hi.
Motion passes three zero.
No, no unfinished business.
You sure?
None new business.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Move to adjourn. Second public office.
Well. I think we're I think we might be safe.
We'll now open our second round of public comment. Anyone wishing to address the board to come to the podium, state your name and address. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes. One topic direct to the board. Anyone wishing to address the board at this time?
Probably a ride for each other.
Seeing no one wishing to speak, we will close the first round of the second round of public comment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Goode, second by Mr. O'Brien on favor.
Hi.
Chair votes. Bye. All right.
All right.
All right, before I forget. You gotta turn everybody turn your clothes session.
Yes.
Yeah.
Kind enough to.
Kind enough to.
Oh, we have time to get a bottle of wine.